Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you all to the Town of Farmington's Plan and Zoning Commission Meeting of May 11th, 2020. My name is Barbara Brenneman. I'm Chair of the Commission, and I will facilitate the meeting. And I'll start with a Pledge of Allegiance. Would you join me? I pledge allegiance...
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, Republic, and to the Constitution of our God, the freedom of liberty, and justice.
Thank you. Would Madam Secretary read the call, please?
Yes, thank you. Town of Farmington Town Plan and Zoning Commission. Notice is hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold an online public hearing Monday, May 11th, 2020 at the Town Hall Council Chambers at 7:00 p.m. on the following applications. WDII LLC application for reapproval of the subdivision known as the Bridge-Hampton subdivision with access from River Road and Burlington Road, known as original accessories map numbers 32, 33, 21, and 22, and lot numbers 11, 7A, 10, 45, and 46, R40C Zone. New Horizons Village application for reapproval of modification of special permit and site plan approval for construction of a 22-unit congregate housing building at 37 Bliss Memorial Road, R30Z. Michael Quas application for special permit for amateur radio tower in excess of 45 feet and less than 65 feet, and application for residential helipad at 124 Mountain Road, R80Z. At these hearings, interested persons may be heard and written communications received. A copy of these proposals is online at https://www.farmington CT.org/departments/planing-and-zoning/pending-applications. Or please call the Planning Department at Farmington Hall at 860-675-2325. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 24th day of April, 2020, Town Plan and Zoning Commission, Barbara Brenneman, Chair.
Thank you, Inez.
You're welcome.
For the visitors that are coming to our online meeting for the first time, we will cover new business first, and there are a number of items for us to cover before we go to public hearings. When we go to public hearings, it's no different than it is when it's actually in the chambers and you're here in person, in that the applicant will make their presentation, the commissioners have the right to question the applicant, look for answers from the applicant, and because it's a public hearing, at that point, the public is allowed to speak either in favor or in opposition to the application. If you choose to make a public comment, you must raise your hand mechanically on your computer so that we know you want to ask or present your opinion. If you want to just listen to what's going on tonight, you can leave your machine muted. If you want to speak, you have to unmute so that we can hear you and you can hear us. So with that, I'm going to start with new business, Mike Farrell, fence exception for property located at 81 Westview Terrace. Mike, are you here with us tonight?
I am here, hello.
Thank you. Can you see the screen?
I can.
Okay. Okay, then you can explain your request to the Commission. They're listening and watching the same thing you are.
Sure. So you can see here, we're the corner lot on the street, and we have a tree line, an existing tree line that you can see there, and the trees are pretty tall and pretty covered up top, but on the bottom, it's pretty wide open, so looking for an exception to put a six-foot fence that will kind of go up to where the branches start for a variety of reasons. Mostly, we have a three-year-old toddler, likes to run around the backyard and occasionally towards the streets, so mostly for safety and then also privacy, since you can really see into most of our backyard and our back of our houses is heavily windowed, so you can see pretty much your own house from the street, so a couple of main reasons for that.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have questions of Mr. Farrell?
Hi there, this is Inez St. James. Can you show us with your mouse or the pointer, like where the fence is going?
Yes, you see that blue line, actually?
Okay.
We...
Okay, thank you.
A little bit different, so we originally were thinking of putting on the outside of the tree line, and after some discussion, I think more likely put on the inside, so it looks, I think, the same shape, but maybe just a little further in.
So the trees are staying?
Yes.
And you're just filling in the bottom for privacy or security of your family?
Yeah, yeah, pretty much.
And the six feet will go to the, like, the bottom of the branches? I'm just trying, I'm a visual person, trying to make sure.
Yeah, it's probably about six feet where the branches really start these days. The bottom's cleared out. I think the trees have overgrown over time and probably weren't maintained as well as they could have been over the years, and so we might have to do a little pruning on the trees, but I think for the most part, the other reason for the six feet is that the yard is kind of sloped down from towards the street, so our house is a little bit elevated, so four feet, you could basically probably just see right over from where it would be.
Going to ask you about this, so thank you for saying it. And then, when you're pulling out of your driveway, is the fence going to obscure your view, or?
No, I think especially since it'll be on the inside of the trees now.
That's true, okay. Thank you, I'm all set.
Anyone else have a question? Hearing none. Mr. Farrell, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, appreciate the consideration.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to... Did you want to take business as it came up? I know that's the... Well, we can. We chose the last time. That's, that is something we did the last time. Commissioners, we agreed last time that we would vote on these individually as to not retain folks online if they don't want to stay, so if we could have a motion and a second to get this question from Mike Farrell to the table.
Madam Chair, it's Inez St. James again. Who's voting today? Or do we, is everyone here? I did not check the participants.
Yes, everyone is present and accounted for.
Okay, thank you.
I need a motion, please.
Mike Corbulis, make a motion to accept the fence exception for the property located 81 Westview Terrace as presented.
Second, Inez.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Does everyone know what we're voting on?
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So that would be a six... Abstained? Thank you. So we have a unanimous 6-0 vote? Yep. Thank you. Moving on to Andrew Renaud, site plan application to install four car charging stations at 70 Batterston Park Road. Trying to find Mr. Renaud now. Is he there? Okay, I've got to promote him to a panelist.
Oh.
Hang on. All right. And unmute, there we go. Andrew, how are you this evening?
I'm doing well, how are you today?
Fine. I'm going to switch over to the appropriate... Okay, I have these two images to show the Commission. I can bring that one down a little bit. He needs to present. Yep, and I'll let you go, Andrew, thank you.
So we just have four proposed car charging stations where there's grassy land. We just want to cut the asphalt in to four spaces with the two new chargers that will provide power for up to four vehicles.
So, this is Marcy Schwartz. I'm curious, there are four additional spaces in addition to all the car spaces we're seeing around this.
Correct.
And these are closest to the building.
Correct.
And there's grass there now?
Correct.
And they'll, oh, I see, they'll pull in. Okay. I'm all set, thank you.
Anyone else have a question from the Commission, for the applicant, from the Commissioners?
This is Inez St. James. I just wanted to comment that this is exciting. I'm surprised we haven't had these types of requests, so I think that's great that this is going to be offered.
Anyone else?
Matt Pogson here. I just had a quick question about coverage. I can't see everything on this map, so this is not encroaching on the coverage, it's going to be still under 40%.
Correct, I believe Mark saw, pulling up that detail now. We did have the engineer calculate the impervious coverage.
Okay, excellent. Were there any engineering concerns at all, Mark?
There were absolutely none. The wiring is simple, there's no, there's no storm water concerns, the additional paving is insignificant in relation to our site.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't already over and then going above that or something, so, okay, very good.
Good check, we, good point.
That's it.
Anyone else? They have a motion, please?
Marcy Schwartz, a motion to approve the four additional spaces designated for electrical cars.
A second, please?
Mike Corbulis, second.
We have a motion and a second to accept. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Jilly Beans Farm Stand requests to locate an ice cream truck at 172 Scott Swamp Road. Who's there for Jilly Beans? Is the applicant, is the applicant present? You know, it could be any one of these numbers. Yeah. And, boy, this is the hard part. They don't rename themselves, so I can't see if they're, if they're present or not. Jill Barrett? Where's Jill? That's who it might be. I'm looking for it. Did you see her? No, I didn't see her. Oh, okay.
There's a chat saying that somebody's having technical issues. Henry. Oh, Henry is.
Oh, oh, boy, yeah, okay, so... I am going to, I cannot globally make everyone here, this is a bad thing here, let's just see. Yeah. Well, Henry might be there, Henry Mitchell.
Yeah, no, the chat is saying, hi, this is Jill, we're having mic issues from Henry to all panelists. Jill, have you gone down and to the bottom of your screen and looked for that bottom panel, panel to unmute, or?
I wonder what Jill's number is, I probably, I need to unmute her, and I can't...
Okay.
She needs to rename herself Jill.
It says Henry. I don't know if she can hear you. I'll type to her.
Yeah, I'm surprised I can't see her. Here's Henry.
She's saying she's not seeing a pool bar.
Henry, can you hear us?
Hear me, this is Jill.
Oh, yay.
Hi, Jill, hi, Henry. We can hear you, Jill.
I hope everyone is well.
We are. We are.
Thank you.
We have a photograph up on screen, if you would like to give it, give it some narrative.
Okay, so we're, we're just looking to, that's just kind of the position, we just want to put the ice cream truck, we're just kind of looking for a little added fixture to make a little happiness come into this time of craziness, I guess you want to call it. We just thought it might be a little added gesture for the customers when they come in and they buy their plants and vegetables and they can grab an ice cream on their way out and, you know, with a smile.
This is also Henry Mitchell, I'm on the stand. As you've probably known in the past, I've been with you guys, I do the Farmington Food Truck Festival in town, which is very successful. I'm just looking to, my partner up there, Jill, just looking to, you know, give out to the community a little bit, to stop by and get some ice cream and stuff, just with everything going on, and we're just looking to, you know, get some people that are on bike trail and stuff. I also talk to the Health Department, and I abide their guidelines, they're fine with that to be the six-foot rule, and so the Health Department as standing is okay with us doing this also.
Thank you. Commissioners have questions?
Hi, it's Inez St. James. Will the ice cream be, or does truck be open during the same hours as your stand?
Correct.
Okay, and is this for this season, or is this a request for importunity, or?
We're just looking for during the pandemic until everything settles, it wouldn't necessarily be, you know, the whole entire time, but we're just trying to do something during, you know, what's going on with everything. They're doing it, you know, in other towns, and, you know, they're doing it all over the country, actually. It's just something temporary, but just to, you know, get through the pandemic and stuff like that, just to get people out and they can kind of, you know, bring their family by and get an ice cream.
I think it's great, and you definitely have this space. My only thought, a little bit of a concern is the location. I personally am a horrible driver, and I know Scott Swamp is pretty fast, so if you're taking a right in, I just feel like it maybe should be pushed back into your property more. That's my opinion, I just feel like, I don't know if it's going to be a distraction, but that sometimes you have to brake and turn in pretty fast. Again, my driving skill is right, but I think it should be a little bit closer into the property, if, do you know what I mean?
Yes, we were looking at the property and everything like that, but we were also, we're trying to free up the parking lot, so, you know, it's a safety thing, too, so we tuck it in the corner. It is, right now, it's hard to tell, but it is about 100 feet back from the main road, so it isn't something that, it is, it isn't something that somebody's going to stop, you know, drive by and stay on their brakes and want to turn in for an ice cream. You know, Jill's already been, you know, established there. This is just something for the customers that are already, customers are heard that can stop by and get an ice cream, but it'll be word of mouth, too, that everybody knows about it, so I don't think, in my opinion, it's major concern of the position, because like I said, it's 100 feet back from the road.
So the position is due to the current situation, like, so you want to have space, is that what you're saying?
Correct, that's why we picked that location, just to free up, you know, so it wasn't disturbing anything else.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going with this.
Thank you, I am all set.
Thank you, Inez. Anyone else on the Commissioners?
This is Marcy. I'm just curious why it wouldn't be in the, in the main building where you're selling the fruits and vegetables, and kind of on that side of the road is... Just curious.
It wouldn't be in the main, it wouldn't be in the main building because of just the space issue with the equipment.
Okay, because now we're going to have people walking across that, your driveway to go buy an ice cream.
Yeah.
Right, it's...
Right, but it's no different than any parking lot, anyway.
Say that again?
It's no different than any parking lot, anyway, you still have, you know, just like Rita does, you still have to, you know, if you get an ice cream there, you still have to walk across the parking lot with traffic coming in and out. It's the same, same situation.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
This is Mark DeVoe. Based on where the ice cream truck or trailer is positioned, it might make sense to cone off at least three to four spaces to protect pedestrians and those queuing in line, and you'll have to be able to mark off, you know, six-foot queues because the Health Department will require that, but if there's a row of cones where the folks know they just can't pull in right next to the, the, the ice cream trailer, if you will, or ice cream truck, I think that might leave a reasonable area for people to queue up within and still leave enough parking, although the parking now would have to move towards the back, and that would be for the relative safety of those people waiting in line.
Yes, agreed, agreed. We were already planning doing that because we have to do that for the Health Department, anyway.
Right, yeah, thank you. Thank you. Jill and Henry, do you have anything you'd like to add before we finish?
Just to finish up at the end, you know, we're just doing this for what's going on. Jill's well-known in the town, I'm well-known in the town, and we're just kind of getting, getting it out there and getting everybody, families together to, like, you know, drive by or stop by Jill's and get something, just grab an ice cream.
Yeah.
And we're just doing it, you know, it's a rare occasion that we're going through, and we're just trying to do something a little bit for everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Mark, this is a question on if we give a permit like this, which I don't really have an issue with, is there a way to do it with a timeframe, or do we?
What I'm going to, yes, thank you. What I'm going to suggest, Marcy, is something similar to the proposal that we're going to have for you under my Planner's Report for outdoor dining, which, while it is totally different than outdoor, well, maybe not. You know, so you've got to essentially show what you want on the plan. We hadn't really given this a lot of thought, and you'll see when you read the, the application and the guidelines that we have since given it a lot of thought, but we didn't feel there was enough room here for picnic tables, dining areas, if you will, so it's pretty much a grab an ice cream while you're in line, you know, eat it in your car, or off to the side of the parking lot, there's a little grassy area over there. We don't really anticipate people bolting for the road, but in terms of closing, I would say, if this is truly pandemic-related, then when the Governor announces a lift of its, of his executive order, opening all, this is a retail establishment here, this is what was approved for, a retail sort of farm stand, once the executive order is lifted, allowing full access to the retail farm stand, I would say that would be a reasonable queue to remove the ice cream operation, unless this is something they want to apply for on a full-time basis, in which case we need a lot more detail, but I think that's the fair, the fair answer for now, anyway.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you for the call.
You're welcome. Any other Commissioners with questions? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion, please.
This is Marcy, I propose, Marcy Schwartz proposed a motion for a special permit to put an ice cream truck at Jelly Bean Farm Stand.
Have a second, please?
Mike Corbulis, second.
Thank you.
Ms. Chair?
Yes, sir.
This is Matt Pogson. I just want to ask Mark a quick question. If this is approved under the duration, you know, of this pandemic, would that set a precedent for other stands in this, in this town to do the same thing, like Sub Edge or any of the other ones, for instance? Would that kind of set a precedent for them to do that?
Well, they would have to apply. So, Matt, what we're doing here is essentially taking this, the pandemic, and we're adjusting the way that we work. We're not throwing the regulation book out, but we're making exceptions to approve items like this on a temporary basis. Other towns are doing the same, the towns that are not, that are sort of caught up in their bureaucracy, will see more businesses fail. That's my belief. So I would say it's not necessarily a precedent, but that anybody that sees this and wants to do something similar can apply, but it takes some common sense. I think this can be done safely. I'd recommend perhaps a condition that the cones be put out to protect, or at least delineate a pedestrian area and reduce the potential for any vehicular pedestrian collisions, but I think you need to look at it on a case-by-case basis, and if there's room for it, if it makes sense, and if it's not going to hurt anyone, then I think it's something the Commission can consider without any retribution of lawsuit going, going forward until things normalize. But, yep, is it going to set a precedent? No, I don't think so, because it is going to be on a case-by-case basis, and it's going to depend on whether or not the, the actual facility, the site, has the space for what they're proposing to do. And you'll see more of that in my, in the, under the Planner's Report for the, for the temporary certificate of outdoor dining, you'll see some more of that as well.
The difference between this and the other applications, Mark, and just the way that I'm seeing it, is that the other applicants are going to be producing their own food, producing their own, even when truffles came in, truffles is bringing in their own produce or their, their own stuff. This is a little different, so we're starting to allow other companies to come in and sell their goods on other people's property, so it's changing that a little bit, and we did something similar for Sub Edge last year, I think, when their road was being kind of worked on, and that was approved, and that was, I mean, helpful, and I can see that the same thing in this case as well, so I'm not trying to put a negative spin on it or anything, but I'm just saying, I feel as if it is a little different than the restaurants opening up and having their own food served versus having an entirely new vendor on the site, but...
You've got, you've got a point, there is a difference, but again, I mean, I think what this application does is essentially reaches out to two businesses and throws them both a little bit of a lifeline.
I agree.
But you're right, it is, it is different, I think that, again, each, each one of these exceptions, I have, I have no other way to describe them, is going to have to be taken on a case-by-case basis, you know, and, and we're going to deal with it as best we can. That's pretty, pretty much all I've got for you on that one.
Do we need to add anything to the, amend the motion in order to have it end like we did last time with the 45 days or whatever, or until?
I would say at this point in time, when, when the executive order is lifted, opening, because the primary use here is farm stand retail, or retail garden, I think what we want to do is hold it until the executive order is lifted for retail. I think that's the only real fair, fair answer that I can give you, that pinpoints it based on some form of logic. So when Governor Lamont says... So when Governor Lamont says, you know, retail stores can reopen 100%, then I think that the ice cream, that if this is truly temporary, I think that's when the temporary exception ends.
Okay, without us having to add that as an amendment?
I think you probably would, just to make it clear, you want to have that as amendment. If they want to do it full-time, they'd have to come back and submit a formal application.
Okay, I'll leave that to Marcy for amending that.
Mark, this is John.
Okay, John.
When we're talking about the executive order from the, from the governor, is that what we're expecting to have on the 20th of this month?
No, John, that's an executive order that's going to provide for restaurants to open on a very limited basis and some personal service and retail services to open on a very limited basis. It won't be a full lifting of the, of the restrictions.
So when we're talking about this limitation, we're talking about when businesses are fully opened?
Yes. Yeah, that, that's what I'm suggesting.
Okay.
This is Ines Saint James. I wonder if a way to kind of ward this is, is either what we talked about, the governor's order, or do we say no later than the season, for the season only? Since we don't know when everything will reopen.
But that would give them the whole season.
They, they get it anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, but, well, that's up to you.
Yep, that is up to the commission.
I have one more question. Will the town check, like the location of the food truck? Or do we have the capacity to? I was.
We're gonna have, we're gonna have to stop by and make sure that what they.
Thank you.
Yep.
Goes back to Marcy. Do you want to amend your motion?
Yes. So this is Marcy Schwartz. I'd like to amend the motion to run until the governor takes off the restrictions on retail locations.
Have a second for the amendment, please?
Microbulus, second.
There's an amendment with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Go back to the original motion. I'm sorry?
Were there any abstentions?
I was going to abstain. This is Matt Hogson. I was going to abstain.
Okay, so 60501.
Okay, go back to the original motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Matthew Hogson, abstaining. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Joanna Roblowski, accept an application for special permit to raise 11 hens at 35 Town, Cane Mountain Road in an R40 zone and public, and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of June 8th, 2020. I need a motion, please.
Microbulus, make a motion to approve, or make us, to accept the application for a special permit to raise 11 hens, 35 Cane Mountain, R40 zone, schedule a public hearing on June 8th, 2020.
Have a second?
Ines Saint James, second.
We have a motion and a second to set a hearing date of June 8th for Joanna Roblowski. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you. Brett and Lindsay Depolonio, accept an application for a special permit to construct a home in excess of 3,200 square feet and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of May 27th, 2020. This does not have an address. Why doesn't it have an address?
Oh, pardon me.
Where is it?
16 Whispering Rod Road.
Oh, that's the rebuild of the fire?
Yes, it is. I'm surprised I remembered that.
Microbulus, make a motion to accept the application for special permit to construct a home in excess of 3,200 square feet at 16 Whispering Rod, schedule a public hearing for May 27th, 2020.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Patrick Carrier, I second.
It is a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you. Metro Realty Group Limited, accept an application for text amendment to the special innovation floating zone and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of June 8th, 2020.
Microbulus.
2020.
Microbulus, accept the application for the text amendment to the special innovation floating zone, schedule a public hearing for June 8th, 2020.
May I have a second, please?
Marcy Schwartz, I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. We'll move on to the public hearings now. And again, I'd just like to say for applicants to, as we present the application to the commission, please unmute your computer so we can hear you and you can hear us. The first one will be WDIIILC, application for reapproval of the subdivision known as Bridge Hampton subdivision with access from River Road and Burlington Road, known as original assessors maps numbers 32, 33, 21, and 22, and lots numbered 11, 7A, 10, 45, and 46 in an R40C zone. Do you know who's presenting for them?
Okay, so we have the developer and the attorney. Chris, are you unmuted?
This is Joe Trunkali and Mark Wilson. Yeah, we're unmuted here. We're just waiting for Chris. He's gonna present for us.
Okay, I'm gonna try to find him in the pile of 60. 60 applicant or 60 folks we have waiting on the line here. Let's see. Chris, he was here. Here he is. Chris, you should be able to unmute yourself. Okay, Chris, can you hear us?
Texting.
Chris, are you there? Okay. I don't know if I have any technical difficulties. He is unmuted. Chris, I'm gonna promote you to a panelist. See if we can better manage your. Chris, can you hear?
This is Mark Wilson. We're texting Chris right now to make sure he's unmuted.
Okay, he appears to be unmuted.
Maybe not the time for humor, but my wife says I'm always unmuted.
Oh, yeah.
What do they call that? No, never mind.
Joe's on the phone with Chris right now, so we'll find out what the problem is.
Okay, so are you here to call in or not?
Go ahead and just put him on speaker.
Hey, Mark. He says he's on the phone. He called, he called in. I don't know if that makes a difference on how he's listed there.
No, it shouldn't. I promoted him to a panelist. He is unmuted. He, he may have to unmute himself, although his mic is showing clear. So he should be able to talk and he should be able to hear us. If he can't hear us, he might want to check the volume on his phone or on his computer.
Chris, this is Mark. Do you want us to put you on speaker on the cell phone and just to just talk through that? Except they'll get the reverb back from the other one, yeah.
Yeah, you're gonna get a lot of feedback. Yeah, I don't know what to tell you. Unfortunately, I can't offer technical assistance.
Mark, if I, this is Keith. If I could, is it, is it possible that he's on his computer and also on his phone? And do we have his, his computer unmuted, but his phone is muted?
That's a possibility, Keith. They're, they're hearing you too, so there are a lot of.
Which phone number is his? Then maybe we can unmute that phone number. That might work.
No, I've got, well, I, okay, so I hear what you're saying, far as attendees. What is Chris's phone number, Joe, do you know? We gotta kind of move it along. They're open. Okay. Do we know Chris's phone number? I don't have it with me.
Depends on which phone he's on.
Yeah, unfortunately, we can't pull everybody up. We may have to move on and come back. I'll let that be your call. I can't make that call, but.
Mark? I'm not getting. Mark Wilson?
Yeah, I'm looking for Mark and/or Joe. The amount of people that we have in here make it extremely difficult for me to find. So, yeah, okay. Do the best we can. We've got 60 folks called in. They, they're both off. Neither of them are here. Unless, wait, there's Joe Trunkali, I thought. Man, these things just come and go.
I think Mark was with Joe. Was he?
Yeah. There's Joe.
I'm putting my.
Hey, guys. Sorry, we got kicked off there for a minute.
Okay.
Are you there?
Mark Wilson, are you there?
Yes, Barbara, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, we got bumped off. We lost our internet connection.
Can we get Chris online?
We're attempting that. We're asking him to disconnect and re-sign in.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna put you on post.
Yeah, do you want to go to the next item?
We'll go forward to the next item and then we'll come back to you.
So if you can mute yourself for now until we come back to.
We'll do that. Thank you, guys. Sorry about that. Sorry.
Thank you. All right.
That's all right. We'll take care of it. We'll move on to the next public hearing, which is New Horizons Village, application for reapproval of modification of special permit and site plan approval for construction of a 22-unit congregate housing building at 37 Bliss Memorial Road in an R30 zone. We have a presentation from New Horizons, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. This is Sue Watts, and I am from Freeman Companies, landscape architects and civil engineers in Hartford, Connecticut. Meet me tonight is Carol Fitzgerald, Executive Director of New Horizons Village, and David Arri, President of Marriage Design Group. And before I start, you said in the call that this was for site plan approval and reapproval of the special permit? Because our site plan approval is still.
Yeah, we, we've adjusted the agenda and the memorandum. It is just for modify, or reapproval.
Modification of special permit.
Special permit only.
Yeah, I just wanted to make, make sure that we were straight there. Okay. So on the screen, you can see an aerial picture of New Horizons Village. It's a 24-acre site off of Westview Terrace. The special permit was originally approved in 1982 to allow a charitable institution use. In 1984, they built 15 buildings, a pavilion, attached homes, congregate house, community building, and offices. New Horizons Village provides independent and congregate living for 101 residents with physical and physical disabilities. In June 2018, we came before you with a site plan looking for a site plan approval and modification of the existing special permit that was granted on June 25th, 2018. And the site plan included the construction, oh, I'm sorry, can you switch to the next slide, please?
Sure, I'll take your cue on that, Sue.
Sorry. Yeah, that one right there. So on site plan, this is a copy of the approved site plan, which is still valid. It shows the construction of four new buildings, which are shown in kind of the light brown color in the center there. If you could point those out, Mark?
I sure can.
Right there, that's it. Yes. And those buildings are connected by a cover walkway so that there's, you can move around seasonally without having to be out in the weather. The ultimate goal of this project was to eliminate as many two-bedroom apartments on the property as feasible. There's a mandate by the Department of Social Services that there cannot be more than 101 residents on the property. So it is much better for the residents and easier to manage and lease if, if they have as many one-bedroom apartments as possible. The site plan addressed safety and ADA issues. There were narrow walks that were steep, or there are. The fire road was too narrow. There's some drainage problems and the lighting was poor. To date, New Horizons has been successful in securing four grants already. The work is underway on improvements to the building and the site. The work and the funding has been done in a sequential manner, so they're doing it methodically. And the last portion or piece of the funding was for the construction of the new buildings. New Horizons is currently in discussion with the DOH for funding of the new buildings. They've had several meetings that have been very successful, and they anticipate the funding to be successful. However, due to the coronavirus and other circumstances, it's been delayed. So in 2019, we were granted a one-year extension to the special permit. And we currently still have an active special permit, but it expires June 25th. So I have to tell you that the plans that were submitted for the application were the original approved drawings that include all of the conditions of approval. There were no changes to the plans or the architecture since the original application was approved. The staff is satisfied with the plans as approved and all other, as I said, all other approvals are still valid, the site plan approval, the wetlands permit. So we're asking for reapproval of the modification of the special permit tonight, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have questions?
This is Ines Saint James. I think based on what was just shared with us in the documentation we received, there has not been any significant material changes. The extension is for one year, though, is that? Or am I the one that's not clear? Is this, I understand it ends in June, the special permit. Are we saying one year or?
One year is all you can request at a time.
And this is the, and then, okay, got it. And we can do this twice? Please refresh my memory.
There's, no, there's no, there's no limitation. The site plan is good for five years and it can be renewed once for an additional five years. That's by state statute.
Yep.
Special permits typically run with the land and remain forever like a variance. However, in this case, and in several others in the town of Farmington, special permits require that you start construction within one year. And in this case, the applicant's done a fairly thorough job of explaining why they're not able to. So they, they, they're coming back for their second, excuse me, their third term, if you will, but it's their second request for a one-year extension.
Thank you. That was very helpful. And now it's all straight in my head. I, yeah, I, I don't have a problem with this extension. It makes sense.
Thank you.
Other commissioners? Hearing none. This is a public hearing, so I will open up to anyone who is attending this meeting online. You are welcome to voice your opinion, either in favor or in opposition to this application, by raising your hand and we will acknowledge you.
We're waiting for raised hands. Thus far, I am seeing none. Let me just run up and down a couple more times, Madam Chair.
Don't see any.
No? No hands. Okay, no hands.
New Horizons, is there anything you'd like to add before we close this public hearing?
I think I'm all set. Carol or David?
No, just appreciate your consideration.
No, just appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
I guess we're all set. Thank you very much.
I'll close this public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
To the commissioners, as we have been doing, we need a motion on New Horizons Village to take a vote, please.
Mike Grabulis, accept the application for reapproval of modification of special permit and site plan approval for construction of the twenty-two unit congregate housing building at thirty-seven Bliss Memorial Road, R30 Zone.
May I have a second?
Ines Saint James, second.
Does everyone know what we're voting on?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go back to WD2 LLC. Are they ready by any chance?
Let me check.
Are we unmuted? Chris, are you on? We know that he had, he changed locations trying to get a connection.
Okay.
So he, he-
Well, we, we, we can start now without him, or we can go to the next item.
I want you to go to the next one.
One more item to cover, we can come back to you.
Yeah, do that. Thank you very much.
Okay.
We appreciate it.
The third public hearing is Michael Quas' application for special permit for amateur radio tower in excess of forty-five feet and less than sixty-five feet, and an application for a residential helipad at one-twenty-four Mountain Road in an R80 Zone. It's my understanding that Mike Grabulis is stepping down. Is that correct, Mike?
Yes, Madam Chair, recusing myself from this application.
So who do we put up for?
John served last. Keith may have served before him. Sandy's not here, so she may be able to chime in. I'm not sure. I just know that it's not John, because I know that he served last. So it's either Keith or, um, Scott. I'm unsure which one of them may have been chosen to sit last. Perhaps they can elucidate even better.
Scott or Keith? Which was, which of you served the last time?
This is Matt Pogson, but Sandy has her hand up in the attendees section. She might be able to add something.
Yeah, if I can just find her in there, Matt, I'll be all set. Oh, boy. Looking for the hand. Wow, there she is. It's making me feel everybody's a panelist. What is up with them? Sandy, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Whose turn is it?
It, it's a toss-up between Scott and Keith. So you could go Scott first, I guess.
We're gonna go alphabetically and do Scott first, and then we'll do Keith Viber next time. Okay, Scott, so you'll be voting this time in place of Mike.
Okay, sounds good.
All right. So we need an applica, an app, an application from Mike Quas.
Mike, or any of the Quases, are you on the line? Mike, I just unmuted you or allowed you to talk. Can you unmute yourself?
Uh, yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Mike, will you be presenting the application, Stephen?
Yes, yes, I will.
Okay, so we're gonna go with the last application that you presented. And it is up on the screen as we speak.
Okay, so, Madam Chair and members of the board, thank you very much for allowing me to present. I just wanted to give a little background. I've been a resident of the town of Farmington for seventeen years after moving from West Hartford. Prior to moving and realizing that the career track that I was on, I did specifically look for a home and property that would allow the casual use of landing a helicopter. This is why I chose the property at one-twenty-four Mountain Road with its greater than two and a half acres and ability to conform to the zoning regulation. I've been a member of the Farmington Volunteer Fire Department since nineteen eighty-nine, prior to moving to town. I have given back to the community as a volunteer firefighter, most notably being part of the team of Farmington and Yukon firefighters at nine-eleven at Ground Zero. To my neighbors on Poplar Hill, I allowed and helped relocate the metacoma trail to the back of my property, thus eliminating hundreds of hikers and pedestrians that used to walk up both Mountain Road and Poplar Hill roads, because those were the trail for many decades. One-twenty-four Mountain Road is a unique parcel. It isn't really in a neighborhood with its lack of sidewalks, ridgeline, two-point-eight-eight acres. It's a bit of a unique property. I do understand how the properties to the south and also east with Poplar and Farmington Ridge are much more of a conventional neighborhood. So my permits both reflect careful consideration after moving here and checking with planners along the way and paying attention that the zoning changes did not occur. I respectfully submit both the application for, uh, the language used in the zoning is residential helipad. But again, there's no construction, and there's no changes. It's simply landing on a grass area behind my home. Also regarding the antenna, that is currently permitted for forty-five feet. And the next change in the zoning is forty-five to sixty-five feet. I don't indicate that I need sixty-five feet, and I'm certainly willing to work on a, a number that's less than that. Also, in the zoning regulations, it indicates that times, type of aircraft, and all those things are able to be addressed and specified, as well as limitations. And I'm certainly able to work with that. The other, so again, there'd be no construction or any type of asphalt or concrete surface, no change to the property, as well as the antenna would be a small change to the property. But I'd like to go over the, uh, the slides that I have now, that hopefully everyone can see. So the first slide is, it clearly shows that all approaches and departures would be from the north, essentially starting at Route Four at the jug handle, and then coming down a flight path over wooded area and going through a void area between two yards. No one's home would ever be overflown. If you could go to the next slide, Mark?
Mark stepped out for a minute. You can keep on going. I'm sorry.
So, no, no worries. So, and again, the reason the application says up to eighteen operations is that's when the state would require additional restrictions or require a licensed teleport. So there's no way that I'd ever need that many, and I'm certainly willing to accept a reduction in number. Realistically, because of, I'm very fortunate to be in the position I'm in, that occasionally I'm in the area, and I do have a small aircraft. I'd like to be able to land here. It is my property. I set everything up with the ability and intention to do it. In closing, I'm not asking for a variance or a zoning change. I'm simply asking for what's allowed in the regulation. And I know that quite a few folks wrote some letters against it, but I did want to highlight the one person who can see this day in and day out. My neighbor at one-twenty-seven Mountain Road wrote a letter both in favor of the helipad as well as the antenna. One of the slides, once Mark gets back, that we can look at, is conceptual from Google Earth. It shows no, uh, no one on Poplar would even be able to see the antenna due to the height of the trees. So I have provided a resume. This is a concept drawing of what the antenna would look like. For anyone that has questions from the application, what a Roan forty-five lattice antenna is, it's what's on top of the town hall. And in this case, it has a provision to be folded over. And if you go towards the, to the second to the last and last slides, Mark?
These are the last slide.
So this shows the proposed antenna at the back of the house, all right? And with the tree heights from Google 3D images, none of the homes on Poplar and none of the homes on Farmington Ridge really could even see the antenna. The only people that would ever see it are the home across the street, as well as cars driving by for that few seconds of going past the driveway, which obviously is not wooded, but there is a reasonably well-thickened hedge row along the whole front of the property. I did provide a resume to the board showing my credentials. If you have any questions on that, I'm happy to elaborate. I hope you were able to look at that, but I have been flying since nineteen ninety-six. I'm a professional aviator. I am a pilot for Hartford Hospital's Lightstar Program. I also happen to be the safety officer for the program, all right? And I am well-versed in heliports and heliport operation, establishing over thirty heliports in the northeast region. That's all I have to, for now, and I'm happy to entertain any question.
Commissioners, do you have questions of Mr. Quas?
This is Ines Saint James. I, I actually have a question for you, Madam Chair and Mark. Are we voting this as two separate application, or applications or one?
It's, it's a combined presentation.
Right. Both of the applications are special permits. They can end up on the same special permit certificate. He did apply separately, but we listed them together as, you know, sort of a combined action.
Thank you for clarifying. And also, I noticed in some of the correspondence, there was a comment made about the communication. Do we know if all the abutting neighbors received? There's so much. I'm sure they did, but did all the abutting neighbors receive communications?
We received, we received quite a few notifications as required. We unfortunately did not pour through and do all the research necessary to make confirmation. We typically take what's given to us. If we have time, we'll look through it. If, if we don't, you know, we trust that they, they mailed out to the butters list that's produced by the town's website. So it's, it's, you know, it's what it is. We, we have not received any complaints that an abutter on the list has not received their notification.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Quas, and your resume is definitely substantial. You're obviously more than qualified. We, you're right, we have this, in my opinion, kind of an odd regulation that allows for this. And, uh, Mark, I asked you this question before, but, um, we do not have a residential helipad in town, correct?
The, not, not by this regulation. The only helipad that, well, we-
Notice heads.
Well, yeah, well, residential, I think.
Oh, residential.
Yes.
So the only, well, we'll clarify that. The only residential helipad in town that we're aware of was one that predated the regulations on, was it Red Oak Hill Road? I won't mention any names. It doesn't, it doesn't really make a difference.
I understand, yep.
Yep. And so this would be the only application we've received, I believe. I can't say that, but this is the only, there are no other, other, um, uh, helipads in town other than the one on Red Oak Hill. I don't believe it's currently being used.
Okay, and yet we have this regulation, okay. I mean, when, you know, when I personally saw this come through, I do have to say, you know, of course, I was thinking about Coby Bryant and the situation that happened there. I am not, you know, I don't fly, I don't have any knowledge of it, but I definitely live in this town, and I know the area very well. So we have the two and a, or more acres, right? This property is bigger than that. The second piece is the hundred feet inside the boundaries. Do we have that?
So the applicant's provided us with a, a series of maps. One is a Google Earth image that you're looking at here. The other was, you know, we looked at, I actually looked at our, our GIS. And then there, there was a survey. The survey included a sort of a penciled-in landing area. I wasn't able to scale the survey because it wasn't to scale. But I did measure based upon our town mapping, and it appears as though he just makes the one hundred feet. But because I'm not a surveyor, I can't give, I can't give you certification that it's one hundred feet and one inch. It appears to be approximately one hundred feet. We do not have a verified survey of, of those boundaries. Most of the boundaries make it, without question, the ones from the back of the property and the side of the property, you know, are, are close.
Right, right. To me, I, that, that's important. The, Mr. Quas, so what are you gonna be flying? It's, so you said small helicopter, like, how small is it?
Generally, a two-seater, a small training helicopter, or a four-seater. And regarding, I appreciate the Coby Bryant comment. So again, what I'd be looking for is day BFR operations, which means nice days. We all know the Coby Bryant situation was due to the weather, all right? And as unfortunate as it was, that aircraft probably shouldn't have been flying when it was. And that's not something, you know, this isn't for any type of bad weather. It's just very occasional. I don't own a helicopter, nor do I plan on owning one. There'll never be a helicopter stored here or fuel stored here. And just to finalize, I'm sorry, reiterate what Mark said. I used the plot plan that is substantially correct for the property. I measured one hundred feet, and I added four feet, for a total of one hundred and four from that south property line that you see. I also confirmed it as closely as I could with the GIS. Again, if the line needs to go two to five feet farther north to ensure satisfaction, that's not a problem.
Okay, so you're not building anything. You're gonna be landing on grass. And I think you said daylight, right? Because it's not, it's not lighted, I think that's the word.
Right, right. So what, customarily, what we would see in the field there and would be restricted by the operations manual of a commercial provider would be limited to daytime hours. And there's very, very clear definitions in the federal aviation regulations on what that is. And that's what I'm bound to.
And when you park a helicopter, apologize for the language used, but is, do you idle? Like, you turn it off? Like, what happens?
Normally, once you land, you stop creating lift. The helicopter idles for about thirty to forty-five seconds to allow it to cool down, so there isn't any thermal shock to the components, and then it's shut off. Once it's shut off and the engine's off, it's, you know, as quiet as could be until you start it again. And quite realistically, I, I look, the approaches here are probably in the one and a half to three minutes, all right, of a little bit of noise coming from the Route Four area till Mountain Road. So a total of maybe five or six minutes of noise a few times a year.
And if we were to limit the number of times you fly per year, would you be open to that?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have for now. I may have more. Thank you so much.
Of course.
Other commissioner?
Mr. Quas, this is Scott Halsted. Is this year-round flying, or is this something that you think you'll be doing more in the summer?
Well, it's hard to say, because the timing of when I might have the good fortune to have someone that I know who's allowing me to fly with them, using aircraft. So the answer is- So the answer is wintertime, there's certainly less foliage on the trees and noise might carry a little bit more. But it really, I don't, didn't have a specific time of year. But based on the infrequency, I don't think that would be a big issue.
Yeah, I was just curious. I think in your application, you mentioned, was it 12 to 18 times potentially a year? If that was going to be sort of compacted into one season or not?
So just to clarify, the state of Connecticut indicates that 18 operations. An operation means a takeoff and a landing. So that would be one operation. Or a landing and a takeoff in the case of here, because the helicopter isn't here, that would be one operation. So 18 of those a year. And I certainly can accept modifying it to, you know, so that it's not 18 and 6 hours, if that's what you're saying. But 18 happened to be the highest threshold before there were other licensing requirements. So that's why that number was chosen.
Okay, thank you. And how long do you think it would be housed at your house at any given time? So you're going to be landing and then taking off again, or?
You know, maybe in the 2 to 5 hours or possibly overnight and leave the next day.
Okay, thank you.
Another Commissioner with a question?
This is Marcy. I'm curious on the 18 times, what restriction is there that goes over 18? And again, like Inez, I will apologize for not having any knowledge about this. But what is that, what is the requirement? How does, how do you want to get to beyond 18? And what is that called? What is that level?
So the easiest way to look at it is, obviously, we need to look at it starting at the federal regulations, which are silent regarding where you land a helicopter when it's off-site like this. Then the state, and the state has some regulation, and then the town, of course. In the case of the state of Connecticut, the CIA, which is the airport authority that you, you're probably familiar with, they operate Bradley, Brainerd, and all the state airports. They have some regulations. And those regulations say that a helicopter may operate at an unimproved site up to 18 operations per year. Once you go over 18 operations per year, then you become subject to the advisory circular of the FAA regarding heliports.
And do you file a flight plan every time you take that helicopter? So somebody is tracking this, is that, or is it?
Really, there is no requirement for a flight plan to be filed on this type of visual flight rule operation. All right, so that's not a requirement, but you certainly could, you could stipulate.
So you're saying the town could stipulate that you file a flight plan?
If that's how you'd like to track it, that certainly would be one way.
I guess, my question is, is anybody tracking it? I guess the answer is no, if the town doesn't.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
This is Matthew Pogson. I had a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Matt.
What is the decibel level of the helicopter you're proposing? I know you said there might be different ones. What is the typical decibel level given off by a helicopter during takeoff and landing?
That's pretty difficult to really document based on the huge number of factors. What side of the helicopter, what surface and all that. Sometimes, so one of my neighbors did express concern. They said that, you know, when the Otis helicopter is leaving, that you can hear it through the whole neighborhood. And that's accurate. That's the S-76 twin-engine helicopter. That's one of the loudest helicopters for its size and weight class. And that's really unfortunate. It's made right here in Stratford, Connecticut, but it's huge and loud. I'm in a two or a four-seater that, you know, really isn't much louder than a diesel truck at times. But to give an actual, and they don't really publish those numbers because there's just so many variations. Some of it has to do with pilot technique and your ability to land expeditiously, as well as avoid something called blade slap, which all has to do with how the aircraft is flown and flying into vortices and other noise-producing wind and turbulence. But again, I can't say that it's a quiet operation, but the helicopters that I'm looking at, the two- or four-seaters, are considered light aircraft, and they are the quietest in their class.
Okay. My other question pertains to your takeoff and landing route. You are going to be approximately how high off the ground during that ascent and descent from Route 4 to your home?
The approach would start in the 1,000 to 700-foot range and terminate above the landing spot at the home at 300 feet, and then come straight down. That's a standard right out of the, out of the commercial standards for pilot operations.
Now, your blue line signifies where you plan to be flying this. I know the person who, the other person who has a helicopter here in town lost control because of a mechanical issue, and that actually crash-landed way off course. You have a planned route here. I have no doubt, it sounds as if you're a very qualified pilot, but occasionally there are mechanical failures. If you are at 700 to 1,000 feet in those areas, do you have any idea how far off course you could possibly go from that? I assume that you probably have a crash radius with those specific altitudes. So would you be in somebody's backyard in that case?
So obviously, the intent is for that never to happen. That's truly a hypothetical question that's difficult to answer. But the best answer and the most fair answer to give is the course here honestly and fairly does not overfly anyone's home. If there's some sort of mass catastrophic failure, then the pilot does whatever he can to put the helicopter in the safest position, and that's what this route allows. Additionally, you know, the way to look at it is the risk is borne by the people onboard the aircraft. It's unfair to give any additional risk to the people on the ground. This route does exactly that by immediately getting away from the property at 124 and getting into the wooded area to the north, and then getting away from all homes and up towards the highway.
This is a question for Mark. I'm not looking at a map that shows other properties along that route. I know one of the larger properties is the Hillstead Museum. Are any of the properties that this line is going over developable pieces of property that at some point could have homes on them?
That's a possibility, Matt, but I can't really quantify the extent of the development.
Okay. But there are, there are lots that qualify for building at some point in that flight area?
Yep. It's a Hillstead.
No, I thought Hillstead was on the other side.
I specifically checked that, and there are, with the exception of one small lot at the bottom of Mountain Road, which I don't need to fly over, there are no lots between 124 and Route 4 that would be buildable. It immediately gets into the forested area of the Hillstead.
Thank you for doing that research. I can bring up the GIS if you want to know more, Matt.
Maybe you could, because there is a new house going in, like right back there.
Bear with me.
Okay.
So here's the property. Do you can see where the property is that I'm circling here?
Right.
Okay. The flight path that he, Mr. Quas essentially laid out was over, yes, the majority of the Hillstead Museum land.
Yeah.
To, if it's, I'm not sure if that land is preserved in perpetuity. I certainly don't know of any plans for the Hillstead Museum to sell off any of the property. The land is zoned R-20. And the only other lot that looks as though there might be some potential for flyover is, based on the lines that were drawn, is this little triangle here, which is owned by someone's estate.
What about 107? Wouldn't that be?
107 is developed. The flight plan doesn't really, or the path doesn't really fly over the home, but it does fly over the lot.
It flies over the lot. And certainly, the Hillstead Museum is a very active, active area in terms of people walking out there all the time.
So the flight path that he's indicated would be roughly from this area on Farmington Avenue, over, passing over this little pasture, and then straight over. This appears to be a utility right-of-way, and then straight in along this line here to his lot. So somewhere in this area here.
Visually, visually, the arrows on the diagram are probably a little, obviously, they're, you know, hundreds of feet thick. But it would not, it would avoid the Hillstead and strictly go down the wooded area just from south of the jug handle on each.
So you're saying more aligned with this area here?
Yeah, splitting the difference of the populated area and also, as you indicate, that house at 107 Mountain Road right on the property line, but not over the house itself. The next, the next slide has a more zoomed in.
The next slide.
I thought that's what I got.
There were two blue line, there's the other blue line.
Okay, so there's the house at 107.
And at that point, the aircraft would already be on its way through 500 to 700 feet. One, one point of note that I, I've forgotten my notes here. The pipeline that's patrolled on Farmington Ridge is patrolled every 7 to 10 days by an aircraft somewhere between 500 and 200 feet. And that happens every 7 to 10 days. And with all of the people making note of helicopter issues, no one brought that up. So it's probably a fleeting noise that really isn't an issue, and I would hope to be even less.
This is Matthew Pogson. I would like to point out that I live along the power lines, actually, where they come along and they check that out. And it is something that is an issue. But it is something that I am surprised also that nobody else has brought up. It's just something that I guess we've all come to terms with at this point as a necessity. But it is funny that you brought it up, so I felt it might be ironic to mention it.
This is Inez St. James again. I'm still trying, so, you know, I understand we have this regulation. Some of this may be unavoidable. Obviously, we're talking about a neighborhood and impact. All we're talking, you know, it's one event. And I think it would be absolutely horrible. The question for you is, I'm trying to understand. I understand it's a two- or four-seater, so we're talking about a small helicopter. It kind of lifts up, you know, very fast and then goes over what you just indicated. So it sounds pretty powerful, like the blade span, is it creating a lot of dust, debris? Can you explain that for me?
There's certainly lift is created, which does move air, all right? But that would be incumbent on me. Since it's a lawn area, it's actually quite a bit better than landing in a parking lot or on a paved area, because really, the dust is all held by the turf and by the sod.
I get it, okay. Just, and I know we're talking about this and maybe other commissioners have questions, but I do feel, Mark, that we should confirm that we have, at least we're following the regulation that we have. For example, I think we should have confirmation that we have the 100 feet inside the boundary?
That would require an A-2 survey for full accuracy.
I don't think it's...
That's something that I can't, I can't provide. The applicant would have to provide that.
I understand, I understand that, Mark, is in our communication, is it accurate that with the substantially correct plot plan and the GIS, I went 5 feet over the 100 and I still have more than adequate room? I can go another 5 feet to make it 110 feet if necessary, but...
Even then, the best that I could do would be to tell everyone that I reviewed a plan that, at best, is substantially accurate, because that's the best that you've got. It's better than the GIS. GIS is nowhere near survey quality. It's lines put down on a town aerial map, photo-rectified by a professional company. But there is no basis in actual survey. There are instances, but certainly not, not in a residential setting like this. So I can't, I can't review the mapping that you've given me and say beyond a shadow of a doubt that it's a full 100 feet. My gut reaction is that you're probably there or, you know, give or take a percentage point or two. But I can't, I can't certify to that. Only, only a surveyor can.
Understood. I guess what I'm asking is, I can just move that line 10 feet farther north and allow that to be the line that I'm given permission for.
I think...
Yeah, that's up to you. If the Commission wants to accept that, that's fine. We've taken the information in, and we've made our, you know, we've made our remarks with regards to, you know, the accuracy. If the Commission wants to get an extra 5 or 10 feet out of you, that's their prerogative. It is their prerogative that they want to request a survey as well, though.
Understood.
And I mean, I'm sorry to come, and I don't mean it this way, but I don't think there's a pressing need. We're talking about a...
Just cut off.
Did I cut off, sorry? Can you hear me or no?
Yes, yes, we can.
All right, yeah, no, I just, this, I understand what this application was all about, but I don't think there's a pressing need that we have to, not that I'm saying we shouldn't, but we have to approve it today if it doesn't conform with the regulation. I have one last question, and I, I'm sorry, and I'm... I have one last question, and I, I'm sorry, and, um, if we were in person, Mark, you would be getting, um, hopefully I would have this out of the way, but, um, do we need, so, we have this regulation, um, no, we have no history. We don't have any other residential helipads except for the one property that we talked about before. The other ones are commercial. Do we need to, um, talk to, like, the town attorney to make sure there are no FAA regulations surrounding this?
FAA, yeah, no, it, it, it's really not, FAA has their own set of standards and regulations. Your regulations, uh, don't impact theirs, and theirs don't impact yours. If, for instance, you were to approve this application tonight as is, uh, the applicant still needs to apply to FAA for certain clearances, and if he were not to receive those clearances, then he would not be able to land his aircraft. But as a matter of law, and I mean, you can get an opinion if you want, um, we, we, we try to refrain from that because of the expense, but I can tell you that in thirty years' experience as, as a planner, that the Planning and Zoning Commission cannot condition their approval on any other agency's approval. Not even another local approval such as the Water Pollution Control Facility. So in other words, you're not supposed to put, oh, and as a condition, uh, this all goes away if you can't get Water Pollution Control Authority approval, because by law, you have no control over their, uh, over their say. So you can't really take another set of regulations, FAA for instance, and superimpose them over yours. So what you really need to do as a commission is look at this through the lens of your own regulations. You can certainly look to Article Four, Section Twelve for additional guidance in terms of road impacts. But the primary regulation, uh, you know, in terms of, uh, the acreage, uh, the setbacks, which is, is, as you mentioned, could be an issue, um, have, have been addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Hi, Mark, uh, this is Keith. I have a question for you. Would this approval convey with the property, so the next owner would also have rights to, you know, have a helipad there?
Absolutely. Runs with the land like a variance. It's forever.
Okay, and then, uh, this question, I think, I, I don't know, maybe it's for Mike, um, or Mr. Quas, I should say. Your license that you have for this heli- for this helipad would be eighteen uses for yourself. I'm sure this is incredibly unlikely, but does that mean that another pilot could potentially land in that helipad at some point in, in the course of your year, and they would have a certain amount of uses, or anything like to that?
Well, I, the number eighteen means the piece of, uh, ground being used for the location the helicopter lands.
Okay, got it. And do you ever foresee there being an instance where another helicopter pilot would land on your property?
Do you ever let anyone borrow your favorite car? No, no, I do not.
I gotcha, okay.
Um, this is Matt Pogson. I, I don't know if Keith was all set there, but I have two questions. One is, our flight path goes out to Route Four. From there, is it supposed to be following the road, or is it just going wherever he wants to go? Could he just go fly wherever he wants from that point on?
Yeah.
At that point, uh, Mr. Pogson, really, you know, any, any good helicopter pilot is gonna fly neighborly, and, and that's a pretty big program that the International Helicopter Association has. So your intent really should be to stay over the roads or climb to an altitude where you're no longer gonna be heard, all right? And really, my point is to get towards Route Four, at which point I will have climbed well over a thousand feet, and you're not gonna hear the aircraft. It's gonna be long, long gone.
Uh, Michael Patrick Carrier, I should say, Mr. Quas. You said that you would not be landing at night, right? Uh, you would be, it would be daytime operation only. And also, you said you might house it overnight at most, you said, and then leave in the morning again? Can you clarify that?
Uh, so the answer is the flight, the movement of the helicopter and the flying would be done during daylight hours only. And I would like the option of if I arrived in the late afternoon or something like that, and then just stayed overnight and then left the next day with the aircraft. But I don't know if house it is the right answer, but it would sit in the backyard for overnight until it left the next day.
Okay, and clearly the neighbors, there's a lot of concerned neighbors. Um, daylight hours, so noise is one of those big, you know, uh, things that would make people nervous. It's light out at five thirty in the morning in the summer. Is, are, would you, would you ever intend on leaving that early? Can you clarify that?
Well, I wanna be a good neighbor, and, you know, so the answer is, I wouldn't wanna do anything that I wouldn't want done to me. However, I'm sure you've heard that before in these hearings. So I understand that that might have to be, uh, put into writing. So reasonable ta- times, no different than the town might expect for, uh, businesses or however else the zoning, uh, regulations allow landscaping or outdoor activities to be done would certainly seem reasonable.
And Mark, question for you. Do, do you know what that is exactly?
I believe it's, uh, seven thirty to, uh, I guess it would be construction hours. Patrick, I can look it up for you.
So I'm assuming it's seven, 'cause I, I work construction, and we start at seven, so probably seven, yeah.
We hope so, Patrick, just for your sake.
Either that or I'm not abiding by the rules, right?
Should've held off till I found this in the regulations. No, just kidding. Let's see. Take me just a second here. Here's intensive construction.
Now, another question while he's looking for that, uh, Mr. Quas. So it's, you're saying it's a two or three or a four seater, right? I, I missed it, but, um.
Yes, sir.
Uh, would you, I mean, what's to say that you wouldn't get something that's substantially larger and, and is it, is it, would, would you have to come back, or, or, I don't know the exact rules on that?
The limitation, the limitation that I would suggest would be, uh, the con- the condition of a quote-unquote "light" helicopter. That is a designation, uh, it's a industry and factory designation that the FAA uses. That would preclude something like, uh, Otis Elevator S seventy-six or some, you know, something that's just not reasonable to put in a, in a residential zone.
Thank you.
Patrick, they don't have a listing here for anything other than blasting, but I believe the commission generally.
It's usually seven thirty.
Yeah, seven thirty to, like, five thirty or something like that. Seven or seven thirty to five thirty. I think whatever the commission thinks is reasonable, because this is a special permit, and given your criteria under Article Four, Section Twelve, you are able to make these judgments and apply those standards as you see fit.
Okay, thank you.
In terms of noise, I believe the town has a noise ordinance. Um, I don't know if the applicant has investigated that. It's enforced by our PD, and, uh, the DB rating in residential neighborhoods, uh, I don't believe, I'm, I'm, I'm relatively sure it's sixty DB or less. Uh, so, and that would have to be at the property line, so he would have to be able to certify that, um, that, that he's not exceeding those limits. If, if, if it is noisy and he gets complaints, he could, um, essentially be shut down based on that factor alone. But as he said, there are no standards, uh, that they typically rate these machines with, so it would have to be a reading by an enforcement agency.
This is Inez, or should we go by, um, Matt, um, a weight, right? Because the lower, I just worry that we don't have specificity.
Oh, you, and you wouldn't. What you have to do is, with the reg that you've got, um, you, you can, again, make reasonable judgments under your special permit law, um, authorization, and apply them to this, um, uh, this application. But you can't really reach into, um, other regulatory realms like FAA.
I think this is unique, though, property. We have a unique resident. Um, I think it should be unique to the type of craft, no, or?
I agree, as long as you apply some, you know, I don't know where you're gonna pull your standards from. I think it's, like, the time is a reasonable standard that reasonable people can come up with. Um, I don't know what standard you're thinking about applying, uh, other than time.
I'm gonna keep thinking, coming up with more questions. I'm just kidding, but, no, this is a good discussion. Thank you.
Another commissioner?
Matt Pogson here.
Okay.
Um, I have two, two questions. Um, one is, will this set any sort of precedent? I know it's a special permit, but let's just say that it gets approved. It's the first one in town. Uh, let's say that I wanna go throw one up over where my parents live on Hotchkiss Road, which is residential. They have plenty of acreage for that. Um, am, am I gonna have the ability to do that a lot easier now that this has been approved?
Well, I was thinking about a helipad on the roof of the farm stand down on Route Ten.
I was just getting that.
What I can say is that, uh, special permits are not precedent-setting. However, you know, we all know that, um, when you do grant an approval, people, yeah, people do look to you and say, well, you did it here, uh, so why won't you do it there? The honest answer is, we did it here because this property had characteristics that made it acceptable. And when we look at your property, they may or may not have those same characteristics, because it is a case, special permits are on a case-by-case basis. Just the same, um, applicants do develop that expectation. Um, I would always advise the commission that you do not grant approvals based upon applicant's expectations. You grant approvals based upon a review of your regulations, and in the case of a special exception, the special exception criteria.
You, I, this is Inez St. James, and I, I understand this may not be unavoidable. Um, and we have the regulation, and, you know, there may be some conditions on this, but I agree with you, Matt, that maybe we should look at this, um, specific, uh, language that we have. To me, it seems, I, I don't know where it came from. I did not realize we had helicopter pad language for residential properties. And I don't know, should we change it to a larger size? Should we, um, even have this type of regulation going forward? I understand we have a application in front of us that meets, um, the generic, uh, the, whatever is in our regulation, but I do think we should look at it as a commission.
Again, I know it's just for clarification, even if you accept the fact, or the, the premise that he's got a hundred feet, and I'm relatively convinced that he's very close, as I said, um, and those, that's, those standards have been set, you still need to weigh the special exception against the special permit, against your special permit criteria under Article, uh, Four, Section Twelve B. And those are the criteria that allow you to set conditions based on sort of atmospheric, uh, you know, qualities, uh, whether or not the property, uh, is potentially impactful to its neighbors. It is, in fact, the standards that allow you to, um, weigh heavily on whether you want to approve or deny an application. Just that, so that you're aware of that. I wanted to make that.
No, no, I, I get it. I get it. I, and I, um, you know, sitting on this commission, um, you know, I'm, obviously, um, one tragedy will have incredible impact to this neighborhood. Um, I understand that the helicopter may just, like, fall down and crash, and, you know, Mr. Quas will, unfortunately, you know, whatever. But, uh, I do think, though, this whole, um, regulation and, or the zoning regulation for helicopters, maybe we make it that you have to have five acres or ten acres. I think that, that whole two and a half acres, I, I'm not sure when that was.
That is another, that is another discussion, right?
Right, right, that's all I'm saying. I think, I like what Matt said, though. I, I agree with you. I think, after this, I think we should look at that zoning regulation just altogether. Thank you.
After, after Monday, Inez, because I'm going in to put my permit in to, uh, get a helicopter pad on Hotchkiss Road. But after that, Inez, I totally agree. Mr. DeVall, I had one more question. Um, I wanted to know, I've lost my train of thought. Um, but I was trying to figure out, um, ah, I tried to make a joke, and then I just kinda derailed myself.
Sorry about that.
No, no, not a problem. It's my own. Um, shoot.
Man, it's Marcy.
Nobody, nobody wait for me. Go ahead.
Yeah, and, uh, then we can come back to you. But Mark, I'm, I'm a little confused, because we talked about having sort of the ability to, um, add restrictions, but yet you're saying to us, we can't add a noise. I mean, the town has a noise level maximum, and so what, can we add that to?
It's automatic, Marcy. It's not in your regulations, but it is a, it's a regulation, it's, it's, it's a town ordinance. It's not a zoning regulation. So anybody, uh, who is, um, found a foul of, um, you know, that particular ordinance has to cease that activity.
Okay.
You don't need to add it, because it's there automatically, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
And you can't condition an approval on someone else's authority, which is what I, the point I wanted to make.
Great, thank, okay, that clarifies, because I, 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 so if this, uh, if these, if we approve it, and then the helicopter actually makes more noise than the town allows, then the town would come in and say, you can't do this anymore, because it's making more noise than I'll.
That's right, and it's not like we're trying to set anyone up to have to do, uh, enforcement activity. The, the, the basis of this is that, um, the applicant is not able to produce, uh, a, a specification of, of DB, so, and even if he did, it's not in your regulations.
I don't know.
So it automatically falls, the enforcement, then, if it's approved, falls to the PD if and only if a neighbor complains about the noise, and they have to come out and, uh, with, with their calibrated equipment and check the DB levels at the, uh, uh, property lines.
Um, Mark, you said underfoul, and that reminded me of my question. Typically, when we have, uh, applications for chickens, we have them come back every, uh, after the first year and have them, uh, check in and see if there are any issues with the neighbors. Uh, is that something that we can apply to this as well, where we give them a one-year, you know, trial, basically, and see how things go, and possibly continue doing it on a yearly basis to ensure, um, that it's, I know it's kinda tedious, but with chickens, where we have so many applications, that would be kind of absurd, but we only have one situation here. Would it be possible to have a yearly, um, requirement that they come into us for rea-
You, you can, you can do that, Matt. You do it with chickens or hens, I would say, but you just need to be cognizant of the fact that if a neighbor complains to the zoning authority about excessive noise, we're going to refer them to the PD. And if the PD finds that there's no excessive noise there, then there's no enforceable action. There's no enforceable activity. It then becomes very subjective as to a neighbor who says, wow, this is only forty-two DB, but it sounds a heck of a lot louder than a lawnmower, uh, and it's bothering me, but yet it doesn't exceed the town's standards. It really is not going to do the TPZ, the applicant, or the complainant any good, because there's no enforceable activity. Especially if the, if the PD, I had already gone out, given us a report on a, a lower-than, um, regulated, uh, noise level. But yes, the short answer is yes, you can. And it, it, it would give, it would give, uh, an opportunity for, uh, I guess, applicants, or, excuse me, uh, neighbors to, um, have their complaints aired a year down the road. Little tough to keep track of, but we'll do the best we can.
Mark, are you trying to say, though, that the complaints themselves would not be grounds enough for us to revoke the special permit? It would have to be from the police actually having.
You don't have any, you, you don't have any. Well, yeah, you don't have any, you don't have any noise levels in your regulations.
Okay.
So that is a, that is a, it's an ordinance that's enforced by the PD, again.
Okay. Which would be very difficult to do because they're obviously going to be calling the police when he's taking off or land, you know, and they're not going to be doing it again for however long, so the police are never going to catch him doing it.
Well, they would have to, no, the PD would have to, in my opinion, would have to make arrangements with the applicant to do a touchdown and takeoff.
To evaluate it.
Yeah, to evaluate it and set their meters up at the property line to be able to accurately evaluate it.
Mark, would that be data that we would be allowed to request before we make an agreement, before we go through with this permit? Could we ask that that data, that key land there and take off from there with the, with that data being collected by the police department?
Yeah, it's complaint-driven, Matt. I can't ask the PD to run up there and develop that data for us, in all fairness. I know they're busy enough as it is. If there's a complaint, I imagine the PD would handle it in that manner.
Is it acceptable for us, as a commission, to request that from the applicant?
No. I mean, you're getting it from the first party. It really should be a third-party review.
I mean, would it require that they hire a third party, kind of like we do with pre-blast surveys?
You could. Yeah. Yeah, you could. Yeah, I mean, it would be a condition of approval.
Okay.
Do we need to talk about the tower, or?
Well, we'd see if there are other commissioners with questions. If not, before we go further, I have a question for Mr. Quas. This is Barbara Brenneman. My question, how would you evaluate the difference between your smallcopter and Lifestar?
Lifestar is considered a medium twin-engine helicopter. It's quite a bit bigger, has two engines, and costs about 17 to 20 times more. It's really not a...
My question is based on noise and landing and takeoff noise.
Yeah, Lifestar is substantially louder. All right? Again, it's gross weight is approximately 8,000 pounds. The aircraft that I'm talking about and requesting from the commission are between 1,000 and 1,500.
Okay, so quieter and smaller.
Yes.
Then the second part of my question has to do with the tower. It's my understanding that you currently have a permit for a 45-foot tower.
Correct.
Why are you asking for a larger tower?
Well, in order to stay in line with the Ridge Line Protection District, which, again, I've been here for 17 years, I've done my best to keep the trees that I have healthy and not do any kind of inordinate or excess cutting or pruning, but they have grown up, and it would be nice to get just to the top of the canopy for a little bit better reception. All right, the next class in the zoning goes from 45 to 65 feet. That was the permit that I applied for.
Right. I was just curious if you already have a permit while you were asking for a taller one, and you've made that clear. If there are no other questions from commissioners, this is a public hearing, so I will open this hearing up to attending public parties.
Oh, sorry, Barbara, it's Marcy. I had some questions on the tower itself and how it was constructed and whether it could fall in any direction, and is it a triangle base or is it a straight-up? And, you know, is there a third party that's, like, do we know where this, and if it looks like it's behind the house, is it going to fall on the house? And if it falls in any other direction, is it going to hit any public properties when we get up to 65 feet?
Mr. Quas, can you answer that, please?
Of course. The tower is consistently built with the drawings that I provided to the building department that, of course, come from the tower manufacturer. In this case, it's considered a single mast tower, and it's supported as well by the house. The requirements mandate that it be behind the plane of the house as it was permitted. The requirements also mandate that it is inside the property line equal to the height of the tower. So if it were to fall perfectly at 65 feet, for instance, that it's 65 feet, so the only thing that would be damaged would be, in this case, the house or the property here. Also, I've went the extra step. This tower has a fold-over provision, but it actually can fold down backwards in order to be maintained, number one, and most importantly, if a large storm, hurricane, anything like that was coming, it could be laid over. Also, when people express concern regarding the tower and the helicopter landing area, the tower would be able to be laid over as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course.
Let's go back to the opening this up as a public hearing for the public to voice their opinions, either in favor or in opposition of this application. Folks who want to take part need to raise their hand and introduce themselves with their name and address and bring us your opinion.
I just want to add, for all those interested in speaking, you should raise your hand now, but you should also be patient as we're going to take you from the top of the list down. And there are 54 attendees. I'm sure some of those are for the other application, but I'm also sure the vast majority are for this application. So we're going to start taking the raised hands from the top down. I'm going to click Allow to Talk. And the first participant is Jay Bombara. Jay, do you hear us?
Yes, I do, Mark. Thank you. Yes, this is Jay Bombara, 13 Mountain Road, Farmington. I did submit a letter, which it sounds like a lot of you got a chance to read, I appreciate that. I won't read it or repeat too much of that. I would like to come back to the survey issue. With all due respect to Mark and to everybody else, you know, without a survey, you just don't know whether you are meeting this requirement or not. You can't rely on the applicant. They obviously have a bias to make sure that it looks like it does meet it. In addition, we all know that assessors' maps and whatnot are not notoriously inaccurate. It is possible they don't even have 2.5 acres, so if you're even going to consider passing this, that you would definitely ask, it's a cost, but not a huge cost, that the applicant hire a surveyor and get this survey, and let's make sure that, at the very least, it meets the requirements. The second thing I'll point out, I think it was already been made, is that the special permit goes with the property. So I've heard Mr. Quas, and quite frankly, I have no reason to question his experience and his knowledge. He certainly sounds experienced and knowledgeable and is probably a fine pilot, but the reality is, once you grant this, there is anybody that can come in and they purchase the property and fly an aircraft who may not be as, that we're as comfortable with. We do know that there has been an accident with a helicopter in Farmington, whether it's malfunction or pilot error. Regardless, that's a real risk, especially if you're a neighbor that's about 200 feet away, you know, you overshoot the landing pad or it gets out of control. So the final thing I'd like to make clear, and I didn't really address this in my letter, and I hear a lot of discussion tonight, so I want to make sure that the commissioners are absolutely clear, and obviously, your town planner or... Correct me if they think I'm wrong, but this commission, the commissioners, have the authority to simply say, no, this is a special permit. It's not a regulation that says you can have a landing area. It simply says that the commission can or cannot grant a special permit for a landing area. So I would, I would keep in mind all the commissioners or anybody participating in the vote on this. You know, how would you feel if this was, certainly your direct neighbor, or in the general vicinity of this? You know, it's not just the noise, it's the physical presence, it's the risk every time you hear it going over, it's just the disturbance. You know, I just think that, and again, this has been touched on, I think, tonight as well, and I appreciate it, I think that the town really needs to take a look at the fact that it has any ability to apply for a special permit for landing aircraft, and I think that it should look at perhaps removing that. I think that, you know, we're a suburban town, there's a lot of houses, a lot of structures, a lot of activity all the time on our roads. I don't think that if you buy a residential property, you really should have an expectation that you're going to land a helicopter on it. Again, unless, you know, 20 acres, I don't know, it's a large number. So with that, you know, well, my last point, I'm sorry, is enforcement, extremely difficult to enforce. Again, I take Mr. Quas on his word that he's going to keep himself on that flight plan, but there's really no way to enforce that. And if somebody doesn't follow that, I don't know, you know, how you would ever even think about beginning to enforce it. So again, it's just not proper in a residential area. And, you know, we have an airport not too far away. You don't need to land at your house. There's no overriding need, or it's not something that any typical homeowner would have. So again, for those reasons, I would strongly urge the commission to vote against this and not grant the special permit. Thank you again for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Just before we go to the next madam chair, just wanted to clarify and thank Bruce Seer for dialing in to my cell phone that's right here, and indicated to me that the construction-related times in a noise, is in the noise ordinance, and it is between the hours of 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and between the hours of 9:00 AM and 8:00 PM on Sundays and legal holidays. So those would be the hours that the noise ordinance would restrict construction-related activities. And again, if the decibel levels exceed those, then he would be found in violation.
That means Patrick's working legally at 7:00 AM?
He is. Patrick, you're legal. I'm going to go to the next speaker, who's listed as Charles. Charles, you're going to have to unmute yourself as well. I have unmuted you, Charles, so you'll have to unmute yourself. Okay, we're going to go to the next, oh, there he is. Okay, Charles, over you.
Yes.
Thanks.
I'm curious, how many letters of comment were submitted for the commissioners to review?
Do you have the list of letters? Did I?
No.
I didn't print those out. Okay, we've got them right here.
Yes.
I believe.
Brett's in his full name.
I did send them out, I believe.
Yes, you did. Yes.
Would you want to have the secretary read those off, Matt?
No. Did the commissioners have time to read all of the letters of comment?
Who is the, who is the speaker?
Can you please identify yourself and your address, please?
Charles Pickens, 3 Poplar Hill in Farmington.
Thank you. Did you want to have the secretary?
Well, commissioners can testify at this point whether they read the letters that were sent to them.
Oh, I just, no. Did the commissioner?
I know that I was on an email chain from Mark throughout the course of the last five to seven days. I think I could have the timeline wrong, but we've gotten many, many email correspondence with letters for and opposing the helicopter pad and tower from the residents of that area.
Okay, thank you. The last comment I'd like to make is that I really believe that all of the commissioners and all the town planners should come up and view this property at the ground level from the north, south, east, and west points of the property to get a clear understanding of what this application for a helipad and a tower really are going to develop this property into. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Where'd he go? Michael Vibber?
Yes, Mike Vibber, 48 West District Road in Unionville. Just want to back up, Mike. He's a stand-up guy, very safe pilot. I've flown to him in New York City. Really does his homework, and I believe that this should get passed. He's done his homework, he's provided ample evidence of his research. It's taken in consideration.
Thank you, Mike. Is that it?
Yeah, that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name's Carl Renfley. I reside at 597 Plainville Avenue. I was raised in Farmington. I've known Mike since 1993 when I was a young fire cadet, and he was a firefighter, paramedic, assisting the community. Mike serviced a town by his statement, obviously predated my introduction to him. I lived out of state previously for 15 years, 10 of which was spent working for a large municipal police department in the Midwest. I'm currently a police officer with the city of New Haven. During my training and experience, I've learned the benefit of rapid medical treatment in transport critical cases. While we're fortunate to have John Dempsey Hospital at UConn here in Farmington, there's other specialized units elsewhere in the region such as burn treatment center at Bridgeport Hospital, which rapid patient transport can literally make the difference between life and death. Having a reliable landing pad that could be used under emergency circumstances would greatly benefit the residents and visitors of Farmington in this area. Also, the recent COVID restrictions have caused everyone to adjust their everyday life to something they never thought would happen, much like these web-based meetings that I think is really a detriment to some of the presentation. While amateur radio has given way to cell phones, a widespread cellphone outage is not outside the realm of possibilities. Given the location of the proposed radio tower, this can greatly improve communications between first responders in the times of unforeseen circumstances. On a personal level, Michael has the highest complement of intelligence and responsibility of anybody that I've ever met. He's served the community of Farmington for decades. What he's requesting does not require a variance of current zoning to that property. I don't see any reason for the denial of these, and I would like to just basically refresh a couple of things that I've heard during the ongoing of this discussion. The helicopters that are used by Otis and United Technology are greatly larger than what he's proposing, and I would be curious as to how many complaints are received in the area, the residents around East Farm School or off Fenneman Road in those neighborhoods, as well as around John Dempsey Hospital, UConn with the helipad being over there. Granted, it's not residential property. It may give some insight as to how much noise is actually being complained about in those areas. And any untimely loss of life is a tragedy, so I've heard the Kobe Bryant reference several times. It's a rather recent event, and I would challenge people to think about the last incident involving a helicopter prior to that. They are very safe machines, safer than automobiles, some would argue, and Mike, in his time that I've known him, has always been on the cutting edge of research in both safety and training areas. He's used by several helicopter companies for both safety and training. And as far as anyone wanting to request additional helipads having over 2 and 1/2 acres, they would also need to have access to an aircraft as well as a pilot.
We'll go to our next person in line. If you can unmute yourself. Thank you, Anna.
Hi, this is Anna Swinburne. I'm the Executive Director and CEO of Hillstead Museum. I understand that we're outside the 200-foot required notice area for the purposes of this special permit, but I have to say we were never given any notification of this happening. Now that I've seen the slideshow tonight, I see clearly that the ascent and descent path goes over Hillstead property, and while there may not be a building in that part of the property, it is filled with walking and hiking trails. In the past eight weeks, we have seen our community en masse appreciating our property, so we have significant human traffic across the property. The last thing I would like to share with the committee is the uniqueness of us as not just a neighbor, but somewhere in, someone in the general vicinity. I do, I don't question the safety or the qualifications of Mr. Quas as a particular pilot, but I do know that accidents happen, and you need only one event for something tragic to happen. In the house that is on Hillstead's property, we have a priceless art collection. It is valued in the millions of dollars. There are only three museums in the United States that can say that they have two Monet grain stacks, the Art Institute of Chicago, the MFA in Boston, and Hillstead. This is a national landmark and a priceless collection in our midst, and God forbid if anything happened, it would be devastation to the institution as well as an incredible loss to the community. So while I do see the blue arrow of the path that's being shown, I think we all know that because it is going through the air, the pilot does not need necessarily to stay on that path. Many people have spoken about the lack of enforcement, and so in summary, I would like to voice that Hillstead Museum is vehemently opposed to this application.
Thank you. Who's next?
Next, we have Greg. Greg, you may have to unmute yourself.
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Yeah, I'm Greg Schultz. I, I represent 115 Mountain Road. That's one of the abutting properties across the street that's direct sightline to 124 Mountain Road. My mother, Gisela Schultz, currently lives at 115 Mountain Road. I grew up there, I lived there for over 20 years, and I spend time there with my mom every week. A slight disclaimer here, I do know Mike. When we were both young kids, you know, probably 40 years ago, our parents knew each other socially, and I've seen him once or twice over the past 25 years or so. I am an amateur radio operator myself, and I can understand that this may be a good location for a radio antenna tower. My mom and I, we do not oppose or support the radio tower in either way, but I, I think we can probably say that we're not really opposed to it. But my mom and I, we, we are concerned about this as a helicopter landing location. My mom frequently spends time, you know, quiet time outside tending to her garden as she's been doing this for the last 50 years or so. This proposed path, the flight path will go directly in front of her house, over the National New England Scenic Trail as well, and over the Hillstead Museum property as Anna Swinburne just spoke of. So, I mean, it is, you know, some, some people might not know that, you know, this National Scenic Trail, formerly called the Mediacomment Trail, also goes through the front yard at 115 Mountain Road, comes out where the driveway meets the street, goes down Mountain Road for a couple hundred feet, and then goes southwest into the woods behind the property at 124 Mountain Road. So particularly on the weekends, it's often brings lots and lots of pedestrians walking through this area, looking to get, get away from the busyness of their lives, particularly like right now during this pandemic, you know, to get some fresh air, peace and quiet. They like to spend time at the Hillstead Museum property as well. And so this is a, you know, a big recreation area, and we've seen a lot more people come through this area, particularly on the weekends lately. So this, the flight path proposed goes directly over this National Scenic Trail and the section of the street where the trail crosses. So I don't know how many people know this area that well, but historically, due to the shape of the road, the elevation change, and the curve near 115 Mountain Road, this exact area has had accidents over the years. And, you know, as, as far as I'm aware though, I mean, none of those have been with pedestrians, but still, it is well-known historically as a place of accidents because, you know, the road curves there, it goes down in elevation. So anyway, I think that, and there's also a, you know, a flashing yellow light there, you know, two yellow flashing lights that say 15 miles per hour, but people don't drive 15 miles per hour through there, they go 30 miles per hour or more usually. So anyway, because of that, because of all the people that are walking through and, you know, the traffic, the, the peace and quiet that could be disturbed, my mom and I don't really think that this is the best location for a helicopter to land. Seems to be a little bit out of the, out of character for the neighborhood, a distraction for pedestrian automobile avoidance situations, and, you know, it could cause some accidents. So anyway, we think it'll like disturb people or distract them that they walk through on this trail through that section. But, but anyway, that's, that's our, those are our thoughts on this.
Thank you.
And we have Portia Corbett. Hi, Portia.
Hi.
Madam?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Portia Corbett, 11 Mountain Spring Road in Farmington. Jay Bombara and Anna Swinburne basically said the gist of the way that we're feeling, but I had a couple of other questions from Mr. Quas. I don't have any concerns about your ability to fly. I feel like Anna does, that, you know, you, you've, you have extreme circumstances where you, you're an able pilot. But did you say that you do not own, you don't plan on owning a helicopter? Did you say that?
Am I still on with the audio?
Yes, you are.
Yeah. No, I don't, and I'm also willing to accept that restriction regarding the, the permit or the property.
So are you saying that the helicopter that you will be flying is rented basically, or borrowed? It may be a helicopter at different times?
Yeah, the answer would be, since I do work for some different operators, sometimes I do have the good fortune of being able to have one of those aircraft for a dead head leg or a weekend when I'm repositioning it from one spot to another.
So it is a single engine, correct? Because it's small, like you said, it's two.
Yes, yes.
And you would be the only pilot. There is not another pilot, because I'm, I'm understanding that the safety of helicopters with two pilots is much better than with one pilot. Do you, would you say that? Would you agree with that?
That's a very subjective statement, so I, I can't agree to that, but the stipulation for everything I'm asking for here is that I would be the only pilot.
You know, my, you know, we're on Mountain Spring Road, and again, as others have mentioned, there are nature trails. The Land Trust has worked very hard to have some beautiful nature trails. I'm concerned about the people that are on these trails, the people that are in the houses. I see your property only through these slides, and I see a house as an obstacle, I see trees as an obstacle, and then I see a tower as an obstacle, just on one piece of property. So to me, that all lends a risk of safety. And then I think of nature, and I think of the animals below, and I know you're going to sound a little, but the animals below, the animals above, and we're on Mountain Spring Road, so when you hit Route 4, you're going to hit basically our house, right there. So I would be concerned about the activity, the noise level, even though you're low, and I know you're smaller, and I know you're not going to be as loud as a, as an eight-seater. I can hear my, my husband goes from New York, you know, to Boston and goes to, goes to Bradley and to the hangar there and, and texts me, and I can still hear him way, way, way up there. And I just have to say, with Robertson being so close, and I'm sure you have other places that you know, a pilot knowing where you could land, I just do not believe that this is the place for a helipad. And as far as the antenna goes, I mean, that has to do, I think, more with people around you as whether they can see it, or it is an eyesore to them. But again, add that to a helicopter landing, hmm, that just gives me the heebie-jeebies. So anyway, that's all I have to say, so I'm really sorry to say for you, but good to say for Farmington, I, I don't, I don't believe that this is the spot for a helipad. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next up would be Mr. Cortland Lewis.
This is Barbara Lewis.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, we're, we're on the same computer. My husband wrote an email that hopefully you have read and had a chance to read. We both strenuously object to this. I won't go into the, you know, it's for the same reasons everyone else has said, the danger, we have children playing in yards, the noise, and like the last speaker just said, Robertson and Brainerd are 10 or 15 minutes away. So what is the compelling reason of needing to fly here when it's a 10 or 15-minute drive? My husband flew small planes, and he flew out of Brainerd, and, you know, it was very convenient to get back and forth, and Robertson is even closer. So for all the reasons previous speakers have said, we object to this.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Chase?
Yes, hi. Is my audio coming through?
Yes, it is.
Great. My name is Arnold Chase. I am the President of Communications Site Management and also several large property holdings in Farmington around Cold Highway and the telecommunications towers, so you have a tower expert, but I, I really just wanted to address the helipad application. I don't know Mr. Quas, but seeing the public notice for the application certainly piqued my interest, so I joined the meeting, and for me, it was déjà vu, because I got approval from the town of West Hartford about five years ago for a, a full-blown federally licensed helicopter pad, but the questions, many, many of the, the same questions were raised there. So I thought I'd be able to give everyone that is part of this meeting some context. And I think the, the first thing that you, you need for people, and I, the, the people that are part of this meeting, and I, I don't mean this to just have a pejorative, but there's a lot of ignorance when it comes to helipads and helicopters, and once you are able to put things into context and get the, the real information, it will give you a lot, lot better comfort. And I, I think the, the thing that, one of the main areas of concern is noise, and you, you need to understand, because I, I went through all these same questions with my residential helipad. Yes, I have more, more acreage, but the, the questions were, were still the same. You can measure noise with a noise meter, but there's all kinds of different noises. The, the humming of a lawnmower is far less objectionable to jackhammering, and so, and also the duration of noise, if it's continuous versus transitory. So the, the noise regulations aren't really necessarily relevant in, in every situation. So let's, let's talk about the, the noise as it affects the helicopter application you have in, in front of you. You, everyone needs to understand, both, both the neighbors as well as the, the commission, that what we're talking about is just the area from 1,000 feet above, above ground to the ground. Anything 1,000 feet and higher is all federally regulated, and I know there's a lot of concern about helicopters endangering the Hillstead and the walking trails and all, all this sort of thing. But if you were to raise your, your vision above 1,000 feet, you would be aware of the fact that you're basically, Farmington is basically under a major flyway, a major approach and departure path to Bradley Airport. So you have aircraft over your head all the time, every single day, you're just not mindful of it. So really, what, what, you have that danger if, if you're worried about a, the failure of, of an aircraft, and I don't have my own helicopter, like the applicant, I don't have any plans for it. In my case, ironically, the major beneficiary of the helipad I put in was for LifeStar at Hartford Hospital. So really, what you're, you're talking about is what kind of danger can the kind of light helicopters that the applicant is proposing pose to people on the ground? And you have to appreciate, you're talking about even at the, the heaviest, at 1,500 pounds, it's still half the weight of a car, and you have to appreciate how small these things really are. And it's, again, if you don't know, if you're not familiar with the real facts, you can, you can make it into something it really isn't. So that's what everyone has to, has to keep in mind. In terms of the, the noise complaints, that's something that West Hartford required me to, once a year, file a log of every takeoff and landing, which I've done, and I've never used it personally, but it has been used multiple times a year by the noisiest and largest helicopters. I'm talking about ex-military helicopters, et cetera, that the SWAT team practices with, that rescue teams practice with, et cetera. And in the five years, despite these huge multi-engine noisy helicopters, there hasn't been a single noise complaint filed. So again, this gives you some context into what's perceived versus what's, what's real. Now, for the, the person that wants to mention quiet enjoyment, everyone wants quiet enjoyment, so that means that you never endure a leaf blower for half hour, an hour at a time, you never endure a chainsaw, the trucks that vacuum the street drains, et cetera. I mean, that, that's all around you, and the, the key is, is it, does it go on all day or for hours, or is it just a few minutes? And you, you have to appreciate just how small what, what the applicant is proposing really is versus the kinds of monsters that, the S-76s and, and the military stuff that I've had land. Everything that the applicant has said, I found to be highly accurate and spot-on, so you should have comfort in, in believing what he, what he has said. And I, I'd be happy to answer questions since I've really gone through it, I've gone through the whole process. through the whole process. If the commission has any, any questions, I can, I'll be happy to put things into context.
Thank you, Mr. Chase.
No questions. Okay. And...
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me all right?
Yes. Can you identify yourself and address?
I shall do. My name's Lavelle Thompson. I live on Four High Street in Farmington, and I'm also on the board at the Hillstead Museum. So I'm speaking both as a resident of the village and as a, as an ardent supporter of the museum. I completely understand Mr. Quas's desire to be able to exercise his, his undoubted skills as a helicopter pilot. I am concerned, however, for when you look at the, the aerial map and you look at the escape route, and it's, I see, I see the museum, I see a priceless collection of art. I also understand that when we look at the potential hours of operation, they include times when there are frequently during the course of the year, outdoor activities at the, at the museum. And I'd hate to have to explain to people attending the poetry festival, or brides having their wedding, or any other type of event, that, by the way, we can't tell you in advance, but if you do hear a large noise coming from 1,000 feet down to ground level, don't worry, it's, it's all part of the Hillstead experience. And then finally, I'm, I'm just, I'm concerned about the precedent, and I'm concerned, and I, that the photographs that we saw of the surroundings of, of Mr. Quas's house all showed the trees in full leaf. And as we know, that for at least six months of the year, that's not quite the case. So from the perspective of his neighbors, near neighbors on Parkland Hill, it's probably a little bit less hidden than otherwise. So I would like to say that I am, I am stridently opposed to the, this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Going down. We have Emma Kinahan. Did we lose Emma?
That was a question on how many questions are being posed here to get a sense of being able to put kids to bed and walk the dogs, but we've already done that, so.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we missed the, excuse me, sir.
Who are we speaking to?
We missed the first part of your, of your, your topic.
We posed a question on how many people are posing questions on this item. We're on the line for another item.
Who are we speaking to, please?
Dave Kinahan, Six Gateshead Way.
That, that public hearing has not yet started.
I'm aware.
I know. Unfortunately, we can't give you a time, and we hope to wrap this up shortly.
Hoping the attorneys figured that out. Thank you.
All right. I'm not showing any more active hands raised that have not already been addressed. I'm going to lower all hands at this point. One has been raised again. No, this is a new person. Mr. Clark?
Yes, this is Stephen Clark. I live on Mountain Road, and I apologize for joining late on this particular topic. What is the, I guess my question is, is why would we want helicopters landing in a residential neighborhood?
Staff is not posed to answer that question at this point. The applicant is, I guess.
Made the application.
Made the application, that's the reason why we're entertaining.
So how do we, I understand, so how do we give our feedback toward that application?
Right now.
Okay, I mean, I would oppose that. I live two houses down and would not want to have helicopters flying near my house, not to mention the, you know, imminent danger they could, they could, you know, if, if something happened, bad storm. I'm also not crazy about the antenna, but, I mean, you know, Robertson Airport, Airport's, you know, three miles away. I don't understand why we need to have a helicopter in a residential neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
So I would definitely urge you all to deny that petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it?
We are showing no more raised hands. Are there any other raised hands? That, that would, that would be it, Madam Chair.
It appears there are no more participants in the public hearing, so I go back to the commissioners. Do you have any additional questions?
This is Inez St. James. I just, you know, I'm stuck on a number of issues, but the basic one is, I think regulation, you know, regulation says it must have the right setbacks, and the plan should meet those requirements. I think we need a survey of the property and the setbacks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Quan, you have an opportunity to speak again if you'd wish.
I'm certainly willing and able to get the survey done if necessary. With the initial application, I did provide the plot plan, which is substantially correct, that was scaled. Also, simply based on, and I think Mark does agree, that we can definitely determine that we have the space behind the house to do it, but if, if you would like that as a condition of it, I'm certainly amenable to that.
Anything else?
And I, again, just would like to reiterate Mr. Chase's comments that, no, it's, it's quite fleeting noise, all right? And any, any helicopter operated responsibly now does operate in a flying neighborly environment. We fly away from homes and people and into the non-populated area. Regarding the trail, both the Freedom Trail and Meteocomic Trail, I took it upon myself when I had the opportunity to help relocate that trail behind my property to help keep all those people safe and off the road as much as possible, helping with the neighborhood. So again, I'm not asking for something that isn't within the regulation, and to my neighbor who said, "Why do we need this?", it's not something that we need, but it's something that I'm requesting based on my ability to comply with the regulation.
Okay, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Quas. With that, I'll close this public hearing. We'll move on to WD-2 LLC.
You don't want to take action on this?
Oh, yes, we can.
You mean, you would take action?
It may take a while to do that.
I know. We've got a lot of people hanging on the line for this, too. Up to you, Madam Chair.
The question commissioners is whether we go on to WD-2 now, or do you want to vote on Michael Quas, because you're going to have a long hearing with WD-2 also. There are many people waiting to speak on that. Should, should we go ahead and vote on Quas?
I think we should, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's do that, Ben. We need a motion, please.
Might I make a recommendation? If the commission does want to cast a motion, it should be cast in the affirmative, and the affirmative doesn't.
It has to be, yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't necessarily have to pass, but the affirmative gives you an opportunity to enter into discussion and develop conditions if you so choose.
Well, Mark, is it possible for them to say, "We don't want to vote tonight"?
Yeah, the commission can refrain from voting this evening and, and.
Give it some thought.
Give it some thought, if, yeah, that's, that's correct.
So it's up to you guys what you want to do.
Vote for fucking sake, god damn it.
Oh, boy.
What?
I'm just going to, I guess I can't mute everybody anymore here.
I think we're all getting tired.
Well, you still have another whole hearing after this.
I know, I know, I know, I'm just.
So the, the choice is to continue or to postpone the decision to your next meeting so that you can think this over. No new information can be brought to the table once the hearing is closed, so you've got what you've got, or to cast a motion, enter discussion, and make a decision this evening.
So I, I mean, I would make a motion to table it. I know where I fall. I've heard enough.
You're not tabling it.
Not tabling.
No, you're just postponing the vote.
Okay, so postponing the vote, yeah. I feel like there's, there's a lot here, and we need, I think, we need more time, I think.
Everybody needs to understand that you can't get in conversations with folks between the time of the closing of the hearing and your vote. It's at this point where you discern yourself how you want to vote. If we don't vote tonight, we vote at our next meeting.
I, I don't think it's a pressing issue, this application. I'd rather vote at the next meeting. This is Inez St. James.
How does the rest of the commission? We don't need to have a vote to.
I would, just for, just for record-keeping, Patrick did make a motion. If Inez wants to throw a second down, which she just kind of did, but she would have to formally make it a second, I think a vote would be appropriate.
Oh, okay.
That way everybody has their.
Inez, would you consider that a second to Patrick's motion?
So I think, I hear Marcy. Marcy, you have a question?
Well, no, I was going to agree with Inez to not vote tonight, unless I understood where we were.
All right, let's take, let's take a roll call vote, please.
Barbara, Madam Chair, this is Matt Hodgson. If we are going to wait until later time to make a vote on this, may I recommend that we have some extra material brought to us for the next meeting?
Motion's closed, no.
Public hearing's been closed, Matt. No more information can be entered into the record.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought that the information that Inez had asked for could be brought forward, but that's okay. The survey.
Well, there is no motion, so what she commented about was not put in a motion. It was just a comment.
A survey would be a condition, a condition of, of approval if you wanted to approve the plan.
Right.
It's my understanding, this is Matt Hodgson again, that we are allowed to ask for additional information from the applicant if we feel as if it would change our minds about the application. So when Inez asked for additional information about the area around that helipad, it seemed as if it was relevant to asking for more time and therefore asking for a relevant recent survey of the property. That's all, that's what I had.
Technically, you'd have to reopen the public hearing, which would allow, which is unusual and not really recommended, but it would allow more information to be entered into the record. Staff can compile the information that you've received thus far, I mean, to the degree that we can, but you've heard it all, just as I have. If you're looking for additional information, it should have been requested either.
During the hearing.
Yeah, during the hearing or, you know, as a condition of approval. Obviously, you're not going to condition a, to tile, but.
I'm sorry, and it's nothing personal, but I think regulation is pretty clear. It has the word "must". I know it's at the end of everything, but I think the survey is a requirement, so are we saying this application is incomplete?
No, that's not what we're saying at all. What we're saying is, if we, if we were to vote this evening, and if there was a positive approval, within that motion to approve, you could include as part of the approval that a survey showing exact measurements like you want be submitted to the town planner for his approval, that it meets what the applicant claimed it was supposed to meet. You could do that within the context of a motion.
So that's a condition, and if it doesn't, we go back, or no, or it's a dead application?
If it what?
If it doesn't, if the property is not quite the 20 acres or the setbacks are not quite the 100 feet, is it a dead issue, or?
They would be denied on those bases.
Okay, got it, okay.
It has to be verbalized in a motion if you want to ask for something to be done.
So you can.
And that's, and the applicant has to agree and accept that.
I think.
If you vote to approve, you can condition the approval. The survey can be a condition of the approval.
Right.
If the survey comes back and shows that it's not 2.5 acres, or if it, if the landing field cannot be appropriately located 100 feet from the boundary lines as required, then it would void it out. I'd probably, it's never happened to me, but I'd probably look for legal advice in that case, but obviously it couldn't go forward. He would not be able to meet the condition of approval.
But the other side of that.
He'd be able to provide a, a survey, but if the survey showed that it didn't comply, then it would have to somehow, it would somehow have to go down. I'm not sure how that happens. Never experienced that, but yeah.
But, but Mark, it's Marcy. If, if he does comply, then he automatically is approved.
If he can meet the conditions of approval, if you vote to approve, then he would be approved, yes.
Yeah, okay, so that's, okay.
Let's take a roll call on postponing the vote. Make sure we're agreeing. Pat? Patrick?
Yes, yeah, I would postpone.
Inez?
Postpone.
Matt?
I postpone.
Marcy?
Postpone.
And I would agree to postpone. Is that right, six?
One, two, three, four, five.
Scott.
And me.
No, five including you. Patrick, Inez, Matt, Marcy.
Scott.
Scott, also.
So what we've agreed to, and we needed, and Patrick has made a motion, and Inez has kind of seconded, we need to have her firm it up, that we are not going to vote on this application this evening, we will do it at the next meeting. Is that the consensus?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention? Okay, motion carries. So that means for Mr. Quas, we will not have a decision this evening. We'll move on to our next public hearing, go back and see if we can get WD-2 LLC online.
Madam Chair, this is Christian Howe. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yippee!
I, I apologize, I was on the phone from 6:30 on, waiting for my moment, and then when it came, the wheels fell off. So I apologize to the commission and, and all the neighbors and residents that have been listening. I, I'm not home, so I've come and I'm using my home computer. So for the record.
Okay.
And I'm really sorry, this was terrible. My name is Christian Howe. I live in Farmington, and my office is located at 314 Main Street. And hopefully Joe Trunkoli, the Director of Operations, and Mark Wilson are also in on this phone call. on this phone call and this hearing. For the record, all notices have been delivered to the required parties. The sign was timely posted, the legal ad was published, and I and the applicant have communicated extensively with Sandra Mishaw, the town planner, Russ Arnold, Bruce Seer, and Shannon Rutherford as we've progressed through the Wetlands hearing. Also, in addition to the notices that went out, you should know that part of my correspondence solicits from any notice party, any input, if they have comments, complaints, thoughts, questions, and I probably heard from over 20 residents, and I also heard from two attorneys who I know. And for the most part, the conversations were very pleasant, and I did my best to advise them of the status of this matter. And I did my best to explain the scope of the actual application, that it's a reapplication. And what I can characterize and report to this commission were a number of the folks really expressed to me some disappointment and some frustration with the progress in the development, and specifically, the completion of the road. And that seemed to be the major thrust of the comments, and I think I explained to folks that it's a reapplication, it's the same application. It was our expectation to be approved so that the developer can proceed to complete the tasks that he's obligated to complete. Without an approval, everything stops and nothing moves forward. So I tried to explain that, and again, the neighbors were really cordial. It was amazing how many people I knew from that area, and so it was kind of like old timers day for me in getting those calls. I should also point out, there is a video from the Zidrosnys, who are at 9 Newcastle, and they have drainage complaints, and we'll address that in a couple of minutes. There was a video, I had a little trouble orienting what time of year that was, where that specifically was on the property, but we are aware of the complaint regarding the drainage, and I believe my client had actually incurred a tremendous amount of expense reengineering a possible solution. They had told me today that they had submitted to Bruce Seer. It was not incorporated into this application because we wanted this application to be the same exact application that was approved because, for approval purposes. So we are aware that this is an issue, we're prepared to work with staff, we're prepared to work with the neighbor. In that process, I'm confident there'll be some sort of resolution. I don't know exactly what it is now, but we are mindful that that's an issue. But the bigger issue is the road, and we can certainly speak to that in a couple of minutes. I do want to say, in terms of where we are procedurally, the Wetlands Commission approved the application with several recommended additional conditions, which we consented to. They were actually very good ideas, and we had no issue or concern. So that approval occurred last week. So we're seeking reapproval of the application originally approved April 18, 2006, 2006. And of course, the applicant accepts the terms and conditions of the prior approval. They should remain undisturbed. And for purposes of tonight's hearing, I certainly would reincorporate all the testimony evidence from the prior approval application supplemented with Mr. Seer's exhibits. Mr. Seer went through and dutifully reported what parcels have been sold, which are still available, and he did a kind of a color coding, so I don't mind those becoming part of the record, and along with any conditions from the Wetlands Commission. There is no change in the original approved application. We're not adding any buildings, we're not adding any homes, there's no additional construction other than what was approved in 2006. I can characterize this, that staff was generally very supportive in helping us through the process. We, again, have communicated fully. I think there are staff comments and agenda review for you to take a look at, but I don't think it's misleading at all to say the town just wants us to get going, complete the road, and finish our obligations. There is, as part of the record, I believe, a memorandum from your town attorney asserting that this should be approved. We do know, in speaking to the neighbors, a number of them are frustrated about the road. They anticipated, expected, wanted the road to go in last summer, and it did not. There were a number of factors complicit in this. One was the changing of the lender. There was also some engineering design changes within, and then the bank that had the mortgage became rather challenging, so that's been difficult. And then we've now had this COVID situation. But I can tell you, I've earnestly had a conversation with Mr. Trunkoli and the owner, Mr. Wilson. I believe they're sincere when they say they want to proceed with the work, and this is the fastest way in which I know, which is the approval. And I know it's cathartic for a lot of the neighbors to be upset about some of these issues, but I've only been in for five or six weeks, but I can say to you, I'm a lot less fixed on where we were, and I'm more focused on where we should be, and I have the commitment from my client to move forward. And so that's the application. I know it's late, so rather than going on any further, if anyone has questions or thoughts, they can certainly, I can open it up.
Okay, Chris, I'm going to go to the commissioners. Do you have questions?
It's Inez St. James again. Thank you very much for that review. 14 years is a long time. I know the area pretty well, I actually walk my dog there twice a day. I am definitely, would be curious to see where these other lots are, where the remaining lots are, but I know, especially on top of Bridgehampton and Newcastle, when it rains, it's crazy, the mud that comes down into that road. But I guess for me, as a commissioner here, I think at this point, I would like to add a condition that there is a completion date. You know, it went on for 14 years. I don't blame the residents. I think we have to have some kind of date. I don't know if that's, if you agree that that's acceptable or not, but I think there should be a completion schedule.
Well, that would be a very popular idea, to assign a complete-by date, but I think it's a pretty challenging request. What date are we talking about? And what if there's a financing issue or a closing pending, or I think the date is the length of the approval? And so it's pretty challenging to fix a date certain in which things are going to be done, and I'm not sure how you uphold that as a condition. So the town has certainly raised that issue, and whether that's even an enforceable condition. And, you know, my thought is, the approval has a duration, and I would, in speaking again to the developer about this, I think they're committed. There's no real advantage just sitting and doing nothing at this point. They just need to kind of get through this virus issue and work on the financing and then move forward. So if you said July 1 is our date, that would probably be an unreasonable date, and then we'd be back to square one. So I think there has to just be, you know, some feeling that the applicant will use good faith to try to finish it at this point.
Are we talking about the nine houses? Or is that what we're talking about? Each one is a house, 32, 33?
Inez, that's why I put this exhibit up, if you can-
Oh, yeah, I am trying to orient myself, sorry.
So I'm having a hard time. Let me just see if I can zoom a wee bit here. Okay. The key is down here at the bottom.
So where do we enter? Who's doing the driving? Where do we enter Bridgehampton?
I'm sorry?
What do we what?
Where do we enter the subdivision? I'm just wondering, like, what else, what's left?
This is River Road here.
Yeah.
You come into the subdivision here on Bridgehampton Crossing. There is a key down below. This was done by Bruce Seer.
Yeah.
I want to thank them for accepting this to be put into record. I thought it would be very helpful. Houses that are completed and certificates of occupancy issued are yellow, and the rest of the color coding is somewhat obvious. The housing units that have not been completed are in red.
Yeah.
Vacant lot owned by others in green. Vacant lot owned by applicant.
So just to clarify, so just to clarify, so we have an approved subdivision, right? We know that 14 years ago. We, right now, all the work has stopped because of the state regulation, and I agree, we need to, you know, obviously, it's to everyone's best interest to allow that this is completed. But what I'm being told is that there's, the developer is going to do this, you know, goodwill gesture, whatever, but we're not able to tell the developer, he has two years, I don't know, when to complete it by, is that what we're saying?
By state law, just like a site plan, the developer has five years to complete these improvements under the current law as it is today. That's not to say that it couldn't be revised by the state legislature at any time. They have five years, they have the legal right to request a five-year extension. The way that our attorneys have been opining, I wouldn't expect them to come back with an opinion other than that that extension request shouldn't be approved. However, we did receive a letter from the applicant. It was mistakenly dated 2008, but it's 2020, obviously, indicating, and I did send this out to the commission, although it probably went out a little late, but it did go out to the commission nonetheless regarding completion times and the reasons for the construction delays and the financial delays. But from setting a completion date, other than that absolutely required and permitted by state statute, is essentially never been done in my experience. I don't know that it's legal to do that.
Can't foresee what's going to happen.
Yes.
So, okay, so we had 14, and we've had five-year increments?
No, the law was different. The law was different. It was the same four, five, I don't want to confuse the matter, but they extended it by four years at a certain point in time due to, whether it was the housing crisis or whatnot, financial crisis. The state legislature came in and extended it, so that it went for a total of 14 years. Right now, the total is 10, but it's in increments of five years. The applicant has the ability to come in five years, if this is approved, they have the ability to come in five years down the road and request an extension in lieu of another approval. Yeah, so a total of 10 years would be the total they could get under this approval.
Wow, okay. I just, you know, I'm sure, I just worry that it's going to be another 14 years, and I don't know, but I think it's not fair to the homeowners. The road is horrible. I've driven there many times. As you know, real estate is my profession too, so I'm very familiar with up markets, down markets, the pandemic, how it's impacting us. I still think that it's a reasonable request to have a completion schedule. But I'm going to let everybody else talk. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Mark, I have a question. This is Keith Viver. So I just want to make sure I'm clear too. Our town attorney has essentially said that if this isn't undergoing any major changes, that it's under their opinion that it should be reapproved by us?
That's correct, yeah.
And then, the only other thing I was going to add is, I see Joe Trunkoli's got his hand up and was asking to be unmuted earlier in the presentation, so I don't know if we want to get to him before we have more questions.
Thank you, yeah.
Barbara?
Yes.
This is John Viver.
Yes.
My question is, I know that the sites that are off of Burlington Road have not yet started.
That's correct.
Have any of the homes on the upper levels been started at this point?
That I don't, I think the ones with the red dots are vacant lots, are they not?
Barbara, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Is that Mark?
This is Mark Wilson speaking. The red dot that you see, those homes, those lots have no development on them right now whatsoever. So nothing at-
Newcastle there.
Newcastle, thank you, has any development going on. So this whole area of Phase 4, there's no development going on, as well as Phase 5, there is no, you know, building development going on there as well.
Utilities are in, the road is not processed just yet.
Right. And to those who are listening, you know, obviously, in 2006, when we had approval, our intention was that this, we would be out of here by 2009, 2010. Unfortunately, with the bridge construction that we did, putting in two clear-span bridges over the two creeks that were there, and then the, you know, the economic recession, if you will, in the housing market in Connecticut has slowed us considerably. Last summer, or late last spring, we hoped to finish this road and pave the road, the entire road, finished paving last summer. We ran into difficulties because of the amount of ledge that we encountered when putting in the road and utilities in this final phase, that even the engineers and geologists involved in the project were not aware it would be there. We thought this would all be sand, and we hit 20 feet of ledge that we had to blast through and hammer through. In addition to that, it caused problems with some of our stormwater drainage issues, and in addition, a second developer that is, has tied into our project, that caused additional issues with us. We started working with engineers early spring, mid-spring of 2019, and resolved many of these issues late fall of 2019. So we went six, seven, eight months, working with town staff, with our engineers, with the other developer engineer, and others, trying to resolve this issue. It's been resolved. Unfortunately, at that time, the financing that we had on the project matured, which it has in the past without problems, we renewed that. But the bank that held the financing on the project was purchased by another bank that wanted to be not involved in residential real estate development, as you might, would consider reasonable, given the residential market in Connecticut today. We worked with that new bank from mid-late November through March, and in March, they told us that they had made a final decision not to renew our loans, and then a week later, the governor of Connecticut shut down the state from COVID-19, and with all the uncertainties associated with COVID-19, it's become difficult with getting, you know, the commitment for financing from banks or other institutions, which we are still working with. We're learning now more about COVID-19, the impact it's having on the economy, what the future may hold, and we feel confident that we should be able to restart construction on Phase 4 by, I would say, without commitment within the next two months. And it's my hope, my desire, and I pray to God, and the creeks don't rise, that we will have this road final pavement by the end of the year. That's my intention, that's my hope, that's my desire. But I can't tell you what the world holds for us in the next few months, because, I mean, I hope we all understand this, the world's changed in the last couple of months. It's really hurt people like our residential development. I have other businesses that are operating right now, and, you know, scary that our employees at those businesses are exposed, but we don't know what's going to happen. You know, we hear that it's going to go away, we hear it's not going to go away, and that affects the ability of banks to finance projects, it affects our ability to get work done. It's my desire, if things keep going the way they are today, this road will be completed by the end of the year with final pavement. I would love to pave the first portion of the road right now for those homeowners, but to do that and then bring heavy equipment up while we finish the development of the final Phase 4 makes no sense to just destroy the road again and have to repave it. So if they could be patient with us for hopefully less than six months, I'm hoping this road will be paved. It is in our benefit, and it's in the homeowner's benefit. Believe me, 14 years of financing this project, the economics of this project's a lot different today than it was 14 years ago.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions that you folks have, any question at all.
Commissioners, do you have more questions? Commissioners, do you have more questions?
Oh yeah, this is Patrick Carrier. Yeah, I have a question for Mark, as far as, as far as Mr. Wilson, as far as the first portion, paving that separately from paving what you have up top, you're still gonna have heavy equipment driving across that road when, when it's time to construct those houses. Are you saying that you're thinking you're gonna pave the new section of road and at the same time, and pave the existing road that's already there and, and the branches off it?
No, when we, when we finish phase four infrastructure development, we get the, the storm drains resolved, we get all the utilities there in that are, I believe are in now, we get that paved, we will finish course the entire road. The construction traffic that would go across that road will be, you know, lumbered delivery trucks and that type of thing, they won't, we won't be bringing in the heavy equipment that's used to pave a road or to continue excavating through 20 feet of ledge. We're still not resolved with our detention system, and until that's done, we're not sure what kind of equipment will be coming up. So I would, I would prefer not to pave that road and also it causes delay in us being able to finish phase four if we're paving the lower part of Bridge, Bridgehampton Crossing. I'm saying that I, believe me, to the people who reside on that road, first, I appreciate you buying in the development, secondly, I appreciate what patience you've given us over the last years to get this road finished. I want to get this road done within the next six or seven months by the end of the year, that's my intention, and paving that road now, which, you know, say, in a, in a couple of months start paving that road would just delay us in being able to finish phase four, which will also have to be paved. So allowing us a month or two to, a month or two to finish phase four and then paving that road is only gonna delay the paving of the lower road by two months or so over whatever our schedule will be, if that made any sense to you.
Yeah, it did, no, I just wanted to clarify that. So, so when you do bring in the paving crew for the last section, you intend at the same time to finish off the first section?
We, yeah, we're not gonna, you know, put down the first course, second course of the top section, we're gonna finish the road and pave all the way back to River Road.
At the same time, correct, yeah.
If we start paving from River Road forward today, we can't really get up to phase four to finish phase four, then after we finish the road up to phase four, then we gotta drive across it with heavy equipment to finish phase four, and then we'll have to go back and possibly do repairs over the bridge and other areas. So it makes sense to start at one end and finish. My desire, my hopes, my prayers are that we will finish phase four this summer and this road will be paved by the end of the year, you know, by the end of the construction year, which, you know, is typically, say, the first of November.
Paving in.
Okay, yeah, and that's all I was looking for, yeah, so I just wanted to make sure I understood you, but yeah, so that makes sense, it would be done.
Believe me, I'm not gonna be 14 years out to finish this road.
I hear ya, okay, thank you.
Any other commissioner with a question?
Hearing none, I'm going to open this up as a public hearing. If there are folks online who would like to bring their opinion either in favor or, or opposed to this application, come forward and identify yourself first by raising your hand on your computer so we can get to you and know that you want to make a comment, but you must then identify yourself with your name and your address, please. Thank you.
As we did in the past, I'm going to start with the applicants closest to the top that have their hands raised, and I believe Brooke is the first one who we are calling.
Can you hear us?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, it's Brooke and Eric Nightengale, and we're on the Glen Hollow Drive section, so if you could just scroll down, because that is our concern.
Glen Hollow is down off Burlington Road.
I'm assuming it's the phase five that you just put a sign up saying you're gonna be?
Where the dots are.
No, we're the red.
Glen Hollow is over, the red dots.
Now, we're new owners here of two years and decided moving this area with the dead end cul-de-sac, not realizing there was eight house development coming up. Now, with the past history, I don't want to be sitting here for how many years with a dirt road coming up, and I got kids that, you know, play in the street because of the dead end, and now we're losing our dead end. I'm opposed to any construction going on in this end, it doesn't look like a great area to build houses anyways, and the amount of construction you got going on and the nightmare up on the phase four, I just don't want that in our area.
And we're looking for the timeline that you said that for the top and then to start down at the bottom. There is several people, I don't know if they're still on with us this call, but there are several neighbors that are in the same viewpoint of us.
Within 200 feet of the construction, because we all have received letters.
We're just looking for more timeframes on this because it affects our lives.
Which we have a nice neighborhood, which this is just gonna ruin our neighborhood.
In our opinion.
And, and this is Mark Wilson, Ms. Brenneman, do you want me to address that or?
It's, it's an approved subdivision, it was approved many years ago. We traditionally do not add timelines to it, but given the criteria for timeline modification that Mr. Wilson just went through, I would think that that's where you guys, where you folks live is probably not gonna be started until after the Bridgehampton Road extension is completed, am I right?
Well, first off, our, our first priority is to finish the construction of, and, and development of phase four and to pave Bridgehampton Crossing, Dunstable, and those other, you know, adjoining roads. As far as Glen Hollow is concerned, quite frankly, those homes will be in lower price range. It, it may be an area that in this market may be more marketable. The construction on Glen Hollow itself might incur a sewer line coming through, there's other options that we're looking at, but today, the development plan is for a sewer line going from Burlington Road to this cul-de-sac, which then offers sewer opportunities to the residents of Glen Hollow. As far as tearing up the road, yes, there would be, you know, trenching in the road, but that would be relatively fast process, it would not be a 16-year process, I guarantee you that. If we start Glen Hollow, it's something that your road should be finished, started and finished in a matter of a month or two with minimal, you know, interruption. The construction of these homes in this area, other than the two or three lots that might abut the, the existing homeowners off Glen Hollow, other than just regular construction, it'll be very minimal, it won't, you know, we have no streams to cross, no bridges to build, the water and electricity will probably be coming down from the Bridgehampton Crossing area, as you can see through that right away that comes down. And then the sewer, like I said, system right now currently comes up from Alpine, or Burlington Road up Glen Hollow, which gives the current residents of Glen Hollow the opportunity of, you know, getting off a septic and onto city sewer.
Why does it have to be extended for off of our road? Why can't it, you bring a road down through the other development and link it through instead of destroying our neighborhood?
Boy geez, where were you 16 years ago or 14 years ago? That's what we wanted to do.
Yeah, but the property here, and now I'm sitting here looking at my neighbor gonna get destroyed and all the.
Well, let, let me tell you that right now, the development plan calls for a sewer system, an extension of the sewer from Burlington Road to, through Glen Hollow to this new development. There may be an opportunity, working with the town and changing the development plan in the future with town approval and, and public hearings, that, that water and other utility line you see going north out of Glen Hollow up to the Bridgehampton area, the Bridgehampton Crossing area, that we might be able to do a pump sewer arrangement. That would require the approval of the town and, and planning and zoning, et cetera, but it would minimize the disturbance of the Glen Hollow, where there would be no disturbance on the street of Glen Hollow, but there would be obviously construction traffic.
So this is something that's gonna go through no matter what?
It already is an approved subdivision.
I thought it was for sale.
I, I heard it was for sale, is this, is this something as a builder that you're actually gonna do?
Or is it for sale?
Just to resell the property?
Well, you know, we're, we're in the business of selling property, whether I sell the property as eight lots to another developer, we've had, been approached by other parties, I'll just say, that have a desire to buy this property so it's not developed, and we've been approached by homeowners who want to buy. You know, our business is we acquired this property, I acquired it, then I got the approval to develop it, and my desire is to, you know, divest myself of this property because that's the business I'm in, whether it be the homeowners, another developer, or some other entity that wants to buy this property.
It's still for sale.
I'm sorry?
It's still for sale then, depending on the best offer that you would incur while you are still working on the above piece?
I, and without, it's sounding like a smart remark, everything's for sale, you know what I'm saying? If somebody made an offer to buy all the assets left in Bridgehampton, there was a favorable offer to us, of course I'd sell it because that's a good business decision. If somebody wanted to buy the eight lots associated with Glen Hollow at a price that's favorable to us, of course we'd sell it. If somebody wants to buy three lots, of course I'll sell three lots. That, that's the business we're in. I, I don't understand, and if you'd like to, if, clarify what the issue is with us selling all eight lots to somebody else, I'd be happy to address that because I'm not really understanding what the issue would be.
I guess we were just looking at your timeframe for this, obviously, you know, since we've only been here for two years and our neighbors have said that this has been sat on for 14 years now, we were just concerned that when this was going to start occurring, any sort of construction, and then we would then have to submit allergy reports for our children and other physical things to your lawyers for the construction area that would be in front of our home.
Well, we would, we would do whatever's required by law, and quite frankly, anybody who knows me, I, I try to go beyond the law, and, and I don't mean beyond the law in my favor, I, it's, I would, I sleep a lot better at night knowing that I'm doing what I can for the neighborhood. I know that that doesn't sound like much to the people who live on Bridgehampton Crossing and have had to live with this road for, you know, a number of years. I don't want to cause any problems in your community, I would like to do something that makes the community better for you, that's, that's just who I am. And I know that's, those are hollow words, and no pun intended with Glen Hollow. If we build Glen Hollow, if we start construction in Glen Hollow, it would be our intention to move that property as quickly as possible and obviously minimize any impact it has on the community and definitely any impact it has on the health and safety of any children who live in the neighborhood.
Well, if, if you seem like you care so much, why not just donate it to the town of Farmington, it becomes the open space.
Again, without being smart, do you want to donate your home to the town of Farmington? It, it's a property that I, I purchased, it costs money, it's an investment I made. The town of Farmington has the opportunity to buy it from us, but a donation, that's an economic decision that I have to make, and it's a decision that has to be, that makes sense to me economically.
Yeah, we understand.
Also, we understand.
And understand that when we bought this property, and I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, there were some, I forget, 160 some odd acres of land, of which we now own less than 52% of the land. We gave almost half the land that we purchased, I bought the land, gave half of it to the town of Farmington in order to get the right to develop this property.
No, I understand, my relatives are Crowell's Farm, which had life rights to their property too as well.
I'm sorry?
Our relatives are Crowell's Farm in Farmington, also have, have life rights to their, for the town, for their property as well.
Yeah, but the, the property that they have dedicated to the town, you can't use until, as I understand it, Ms. Crowell passes away. Right now, the town has use of 48% of the land that I purchased. We've made an offer to the town, in fact, there's one area that the town is, some of the town employees have requested us to work on to minimize their, the risk associated with working on the sewer, that would cut down a hill, we offered to cut that hill down for them and turn it into a park and soccer fields, and the town rejected it at the time, but, you know, it's always been my desire to try to make this something that was beneficial to the town. So I, I don't know how much more land, you know, I can give to the town for free.
Sure, we understand.
It's not only that, it's just trying to keep some woods around too, because there's a lot of animals in the area that are running around, and then, you know, a soccer field isn't always the greatest thing, bears.
I understand that, and also, also understand that when we did this development, the wetlands that you see coming, that kind of parallel River Road was full of old automobiles, lawn mowers, garbage cans, washing machines, we went in there, we cleaned up the wetlands when we built this development. So we tried to improve the property that quite frankly, we gave to the town of Farmington. We offered to put a road in so that high school students could go down and study the ecology in the wetland area and use it for science and education. So we've tried to do things to make this development part of the community and be beneficial to the community, we continue to be in that mode because, without going into other things that I do with my time and, and the, the, the money that we might make or value we receive from this development, which hasn't been much because of the interest we've had to pay over 16 years or 14 years, we continue to be in a position to try to make this the best that we can for this community, which is why it became a land development instead of just coming in and putting in 81-acre lots.
No, I understand, we were just looking for the timeframe and when you're gonna be starting or breaking ground so we can.
The breaking ground on Glen Hollow, quite frankly, is up in the air. If we determine and we see that there is market activity and the price range of Glen Hollow would be, hopefully, we would build that road, that extension, and move those homes quickly. When it occurs is, is market-driven. But again, our intention is to move this property as quickly as possible, is to my advantage to move it as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get another hand up?
Yeah, we gotta get there. Next person up is Jeremy.
Hey, can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Yes, we can.
Hey, Jeremy Bookie, 11 Bridgehampton Crossing. You know, Mark, Joe certainly appreciate, you know, all the challenges that you guys have had, right, from the bridges to the economic conditions, et cetera. And, and I'm, I'm encouraged to hear that, that you're looking to have this road finished, you know, by the end of the year, obviously, assuming everything goes correctly. You know, no doubt in my mind that, that you, you know, this, this, this should definitely be approved, right, and move forward, because, you know, that's the only way it's gonna get done, and I know you're looking forward to, I'm sure, to get out of this as quickly as possible and, and, and put a bow on it and market is complete. You know, one of my concerns is, is, is this, and, and, you know, it's, it starts with the road certainly and, and kind of the inconvenience and the upkeep of that throughout the winter with the construction pylons and everything that you guys have to do from a plowing standpoint. There's still a lot of construction debris throughout the neighborhood in spots, not having the school buses come up the road for, for the young kids creates a pretty dangerous situation at the end of the road in terms of parents waiting and parking, et cetera. And then, and then, you know, kind of the final item is just the, the general overall condition of the common areas in the neighborhood in general. As you know, right, we were required to put up a $10,000 bond, you know, when, when purchasing a home here to make sure that our landscaping was up, up to snuff, including our, our grass, et cetera, right, and certain covenants we had to abide by. My main concern is, you know, independent of the road, you know?
Very in good shape.
That, that's, that's something that, that could be fixed, you know, throughout, right? You know, we, we, we could make sure that, you know, the grass wasn't burnt out, that we put some sprinklers in common areas, even if that's something that, that the residents had to absorb when, when it gets turned over to the association, et cetera, right? There's just a, a lot of areas, and, and I- There's just a lot of areas, and I believe there's other people on from the neighborhood as well too, that we just feel like that the upkeep as we've been going hasn't been fantastic and hasn't kind of matched the standard that we're all held to as homeowners.
Can you hear me?
Ken.
Yes, who's speaking?
First off, we will pay more attention to the common areas this summer, I promise you that. That we will make this look better. We're in the process of working with our infrastructure development crew, if you will, the company that we have been dealing with, to try to get them to resolve some of the issues with the debris that's at the end of Newcastle, at the end of where Bridgehampton ends. Right now, we have, there's pallets up there that are part of the sodding company who brought in grass. We've asked them to remove those and we're having difficulty getting that removed. But we'll get up there and clean this area up. As far, you raised another issue and I'm trying to get back to it and I just had a brain loss. Common area, oh no, the other area was the, we're muted. Okay, can you hear me still?
Yep.
Okay, the other issue that you raised, and it's a major concern of mine, and it has been now for 14 years, is the bus. The bus is coming up into Bridgehampton to pick up the children. I fought from day one. That's why if you look at all the cul-de-sacs, they're not simple cul-de-sacs. They are two-lane cul-de-sacs. There's no reason, no reason in the world that a bus should not be able to drive all the way up Bridgehampton Crossing and turn around in any of these cul-de-sacs because they are two-lane cul-de-sacs. The bus company has chosen not to do that. It's outside of my control. If you look at the area, Joe, give me lot numbers so they can point it out here where the hill is. Those, the first, if you will, the first 12345678, eight lots on the left. On the left, you see that area behind it that's surrounded. That's the hill that some of the town had asked us to remove the hill. And that's where we were looking at possibly putting in like a park or soccer fields or such. We also said that we could put in with the park, a parking area where the buses could come up the access road. Parents could come up in there, park their cars, and the buses could drop off and pick up children there. There's also no reason that the buses at least can't come up and go around the jug handle here, the first lots on the right, and turn around and go back so that the parents don't have to park their cars right off of River Road. It would make it very dangerous when you turn in. That's a major concern of mine. It's been a major concern of mine since day one. But unfortunately, that's outside of my control. That is up to the town and the school board and the bus company to resolve that issue. We tried to address that issue during the public hearings when we had the original approval, and it's still a concern of mine. I have issues where I live that there's no bus service at all. And I spent two months with planning and zoning, designing a, if you will, a little, they called it a guardhouse, but it was a place where my children could be at the end of the driveway waiting for the bus. And then I learned after going through two months with planning and zoning, the buses don't come down my street. So we never built it. I appreciate the concern over the buses. I've been up there when the people are picking up their children, dropping off their children, and it bothers me. That's something that I wish and hope that the town staff and others will consider and take to the school board and the bus company and try to resolve this because that's a long way to go. There's a lot of homes there with children, a lot of cars parked there. They cause it quite frankly, a hazard when the school buses come. And I hope that somebody addresses that. We will address the aesthetics of the development this summer.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mark. Somebody else?
The next person in line is Galena Woolenek.
Good evening. This is Brian in Galena Wall and it's at Nine Gates Headway. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you for the opportunity to allow us to address the commission on an issue that has been a great concern to us, to our family, and I know to the many neighbors I've spoken with over the years. By way of background, we built our house in 2014. And when we moved into the neighborhood, we thought it had the potential to be among the most beautiful in the area. Unfortunately, since then, there's been little evidence of the good faith that Attorney Hoehofer referenced earlier. Instead, the applicant has displayed either an inability or an unwillingness to address basic issues relating to aesthetics, to property value diminution, damage to automobiles, countless tales we could tell you of damaged suspensions, flat tires, spilled coffee. And most notably, the physical safety of our children, as the applicant has just touched upon, relating to the bus stop and other issues. For the moment, we can focus on the roads because although issues of inadequate lighting, unkempt common areas are important, in the interest of time and in the interest of allowing other neighbors to speak, I want to talk about what is most important to us, which are the roads. I've had multiple conversations with the applicant personally, both verbally and in writing, in which affirmative representations and assurances were made that these issues would be addressed. To date, none have been. Most recently, last year in June of 2019, written promises were made that these issues would be addressed by August of 2019. Again, none were. To date, we still have raised structures all throughout the road, uneven pavement, potholes, destroyed or damaged curbs, and any number of other issues. Now, the reason for that August 2019 date is no coincidence, of course. It's what Mr. Wilson just addressed that bothers us most, and it's the bus stop safety issues. In addition to the cars piling up as they do, our children for years, and there are several dozen in the neighborhood with more moving in, have stood alongside River Road in the morning with cars racing by when very easily, the bus stop could and should be moved deeper into the neighborhood. For whatever reasons, and I think we know what the reasons are, the town has declined to do that and won't approve that despite many of us going to the town without these roads being fixed. Now, the applicant spoke a bit earlier, certain difficulties and challenges ranging from ledges to funding issues. Spoke of COVID-related concerns that frankly have only existed for a few months as compared to the nearly decade and a half since all of this began. He's also spoken of, as I understand it, desire to complete or perform further construction before the roads are finished. I would respectfully submit that he has the sequence backwards. Based certainly on anecdotal discussions with visitors who were also prospective buyers to our own home, I don't think the property is going to sell as frankly has been evident for the last few years until these roads are finished, until the common areas are addressed. I would simply ask that the commission look very closely, very carefully in considering this application. If the commission is to consider reapproving this application, I ask that to the extent that it can, that it make any approval expressly conditional and contingent upon first addressing these issues, particularly the road paving issues, before any further land is cleared, before any homes are built, before any further work is done. What should be done, what must be done, I would submit, is to fix the roads as we have discussed. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next hand?
Ken Pacilio, I believe?
Hi.
I hear a voice.
Ken?
Hi, can you hear me?
You're up, Ken.
Yeah, you need to speak up just a little bit, please. Okay. Hi, my name is Ken Pacilio. I live on 46 Alpine Drive. My property butts up against the Phase 5 down by Glen Hollow. My little history, my family bought, did the property, it's that dumb, just a little bit lower left, that big chunk next to the lot, 15 and 16, yeah, in the lower left. My family bought that property back in 1970. And at that time, there was no development on any of Alpine Drive, either north or south of it. Glen Hollow didn't exist at that time. We, my parents bought that property because of the, all the woods that were out there back at that time. Quite frankly, this was all wilderness. My dad passed away in 2012 during the time when this initial planning was taking place and he was ill and probably couldn't communicate very well with his desires to have the wilderness. I'd taken over the property after he passed. My concern is, like the other neighbor was stating earlier, the wildlife, this Phase 5 area that's being planned or has been approved, the wilderness factor now is of great importance to my family. Wildlife that's back all the time is one of the key areas, key things that I took property over for. I remember a little, a few minutes ago, someone mentioning about potentially selling the property. I would, those two lots, 15 and 16, for me are a great concern to see if there's some kind of negotiation we can enter into. Obviously can't purchase the whole property, but like this morning, I was back there in the woods watching a gray owl catch a mouse, something I'm gonna miss if that property's developed. So that was about all I have to say. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you. Another hand?
Okay, that is the last speaker that had their hand raised. Oh, we just have, I'm sorry, we have one more. Michael Kokomo.
Hi, this is Taylor Norton Kokomo. We live at 26 Bridgehampton Crossing. We've been here for about eight years now. Just to reiterate on some of what my neighbors have said. We do love the subdivision. However, we would like to see some things finished just to make it complete. And we've been promised some things that just have not been delivered upon. And I understand what Wilson is proposing with finishing Phase 4 and working the way, working his way back down. But in order to ensure us that our roadways and landscaping would be actually completed, one thing I think that could ensure that is requiring that any future building permits in Phase 4 are conditioned upon the completion of the Bridgehampton, Gateshead, and Newcastle roadways as well as landscaping. Is that something that would be possible?
The commission can place any conditions that they want. However, the state statutes expressly permit for five years to complete the improvements. They allow the applicant to apply for a five-year extension. If the commission were to impose conditions that the improvements be completed before the last house is sold, for instance, or any other house is sold, it would essentially be a non-enforceable condition. It wouldn't be something that we would be able to penalize the developer for. And I'm not saying it's ill-advised, but in the end, I don't think it has a lot of teeth.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next one?
That may be it. One more has raised their hand. Brian Zdrosny, does Zdrosny?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So Brian Zdrosny, Nine Newcastle Place. I'm wondering if you're going to be approving this with a failing drainage system.
Does the applicant want to answer that, please?
Well, is that, I believe that, I couldn't hear, but is that Brian that asked the question?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, Brian, Mark Wilson. And as you know, we've been working not only with our engineers, but the engineers from the developer to the, on the map to the left of us, who have tied into our storm drainage system. We, the initial assessment of the geological conditions of the detention system near your property were that it would be sand. We had test pits done on all the lots on Phase 4 back in 2006, which indicated we had sandy soil. And as you know, we did not encounter sandy soil. We encountered ledge. When we put in the detention system as it exists, when the hole was dug for the piping for the detention system, groundwater came up. What's coming onto your property right now isn't runoff from a street. It's runoff from groundwater. We're trying to resolve that issue under the codes and regulations. We have to resolve the issue so that the impact on your property is no greater than it would have been had we not been there. And all I can say is that that's the code, that's the regulation, and that's what we'll do. We will work with you to try to resolve this issue as we're working with the other developer in the area to resolve the issues affecting us. I saw the video today. Joe showed me the video. And if you're available this week, I'd love to meet you up at your property and go back and look at some of the issues. I want to see it firsthand without coming onto your property without your permission. And the town staff knows that we've been talking with them, with our engineers, trying to resolve the issue that's associated with that drainage onto your property. When you purchased the property from us, you were aware a detention system was going in there as we were. But we were not aware when we broke ground on that detention system, what we uncovered because our geologists and our engineers told us it was something different than what we discovered. We were told it would be sandy soil and what we found was rock. So we're resolving that issue. That was the issue that I mentioned that we've been working on all summer because there were a number of aspects that made it very complicated for us. We resolved the issue, we think. But now, because of a number of factors that fell into place, the timing of our loan renewal, the purchase of our lender by another lender, and once we resolve that issue, and I'm not trying to throw everything at a virus, but the COVID-19 has thrown a monkey wrench in the entire world. And it's making it difficult to quickly get things done because of the uncertainty of what the future is. But I think we have a better handle on the future. I'm being told we have a better handle on the future. We have multiple directions we can go with getting the financing and the funding we need to complete this development and to resolve the issue on your property. And that's what we're going to do. And we'll do it in a manner that hopefully will make you happy, but will definitely fall within the regulations and the laws of the state of Connecticut.
Is there a approved solution yet on paper that is going to get approved with this subdivision? Or is it going to be approved, the subdivision, and then designed the system for the drainage of the road? That's probably more towards the town than you, Mark.
What I can say is, yeah, it has not been formally redesigned yet. However, before the pandemic took hold, we as staff sat down with Joe and I believe one of the excavators on the Armin Mateo, and reviewed some plans. They were preliminary in, so they were incomplete. But they were moving towards engineering a solution. And first blush looks like it's a workable solution. However, we have not yet received complete plans, I think, again, doing part to the virus.
And if you look at the top, upper left hand of the screen right now, you see BL Corporation. BL are the engineers who have worked with us on this issue. In addition, like I said, there's another developer on the screen to the left of us who is causing issues with our detention system. We've been working with them and their engineering firm as well as the town and trying to resolve this issue. We have a number of options to resolve the issue. And those options, all of them, will fall within the codes and regulations of handling groundwater and stormwater runoff. And we'll try to do it in a manner, obviously, Brian, too, that impacts you the least because, you know, you bought your property from us, you expected, you know, quiet use, if you will, going back to... quiet use, if you will, going back to the helicopter of your, of your property, and it's not my desire to cause any harm to your property, your home, your land, in any way, shape, or form. Whatever the code allows us, we'll do. Whatever the code doesn't allow us to do, we won't do.
And I, I believe, Mark, I totally believe you. I really, I really do. I appreciate, I know, when I bought this lot, I really appreciated that you sold to me, and I think you have the best intentions, but I think the people that you surround yourself with aren't the best. People, I do not trust them. B and L, don't trust them. Armin, don't trust them. So, I would like to have, again, one just kind of know, can the town approve this subdivision with the sewer system designed the way it is now? Or not?
With the storm drainage issue that you have, you're talking about, Brian?
Yeah, like, the, whatever you have there for the, the level spreader that's not working, we all know it's not working. B and L came, it's not working. Bruce Sears come out there multiple times, knows not working. Are you gonna?
The town knows, yes, the town, the town knows that it's not working. If this subdivision were not up for reapproval, we would still be working with the developer to find a solution. The fact that it has not been, it has been partially engineered, the fact that the final engineering has not yet been approved by the town, it really does not mean we're not moving forward to make sure that this problem is corrected.
And if I may.
Can you, can you approve this with a?
Yeah, Brian, Brian, Mark Wilson, again, if I might, the town approved this development in 2006 with the detention system that we proposed at that time. We have found that that detention system doesn't work. Let's assume that we were not in redevelopment. We're still under the original development approval. We could not move forward with the detention system that doesn't work. We would have to redesign our detention system to make it so it meets code and regulations as required by the state of Connecticut and the town of Farmington, regardless of how it was approved back in 2006. Reapproving this development plan, letting it go forward for a few more years, doesn't change the fact that we have to meet code and regulation for the water that is discharged from our property onto yours. So, regardless of what detention system is currently there, the detention system that ultimately will be there is one that meets all codes. And I think from the town staff, I think I stated that correctly.
You did.
I would, I would love, I would love to believe all that. I would love to believe all that, and I know you have the best intentions. I do believe that, Mark.
Well, Brian, you don't have to believe me. That's the law.
It is hard to believe, it is hard to believe when the road is like full with, with stone and dirt and rock, like, that, that, I believe that in, in six months, that that's all gonna be fixed. I just, I just, I think the people that are around you, I don't buy it. I don't buy that, Armin, he's gonna put a good system in, and, and that they're not gonna bury something that they're not supposed to bury, or that they're supposed to do the right job. And at the end of the day, it's all over. Who's gonna fix it? I'm gonna have to complain to the town a million times, which I won't do, and I'm gonna be left with water that I'm gonna fix myself. That's, I can see that happening. So, I was more just wondering, the town is gonna knowingly approve the subdivision with a, a system that is not figured out that, it's not hatched out, and we're just gonna, with no plan on where they're gonna put all that water for that road, they're gonna approve the, prove it and fix it later? It's kind of backwards to me. I guess that's, if that's what the town has to do, that's what they're gonna do.
That is the advice that we received from our town attorney. So, the, the town would move forward with an approval and continue to work with the developer.
Engineering plans.
Yeah, to, to develop an engineering plan, which we, which we, it's been roughed out, and it's quite a system. It looks like it's a very expensive solution.
And I, I saw the system with the, with the 60-inch pipe, and it's, in fact, like a worse system then was originally designed, just holds the water and seeps it under our yard for months to come. So, I mean, I really.
I'm not interested, so I have to rely on, I have to rely on the, the review of the engineering folks in the town and the engineering expertise that's brought to bear by the applicant. Unfortunately, that's what we have to rely on.
And Brian, let me say again, as I think the town has stated, regardless of the approval that's granted to allow us to continue to develop phase four, regardless of what detention system is currently in the plan, the ultimate detention system that goes in has to be one that meets the guidelines that the town originally thought were being met by the original detention system. And as they stated, we went from a $20,000 detention system to potentially a $250,000 detention system. And to, well, whatever occurs on the phase four will meet state and town regulations and, and regulations and guidelines. It will not be a decision made by us, it'll be the decision made by the town, under the regulations that they follow, under code and under state law. I wanted to protect, I wanted to say that wasn't fair, but. I would be happy to meet with you tomorrow, the next day, whenever you have time. I want to come out there, look at your property and see what the problems are, and so we can really ascertain what, what the issues are for you and try to address them the best that we can.
Anytime tomorrow. You name the time, I'll be here.
Okay, great.
Another hand up?
There are no more hands raised, Madam Chair.
I think there's one more. Emma?
Emma. Oh, I'm sorry.
Emma didn't answer before.
Yes, Emma.
Thank you. No, this is, this is Dave and Emma Kittingham at Six Gateshead Way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Let me, actually, some of what I'll share is probably gonna be very repetitive, and I appreciate the ability to be heard, but let me begin with something that hasn't been stated. And as a resident in Bridge Hampton Crossing, I would tell you, this is an incredible neighborhood. We moved here four years ago, and the, the relationships with our neighbors throughout the community has been, has been incredible. We've had annual neighborhood block parties. Just recently, there was a, a parade for celebrating the healthcare workers in the neighborhood, and there was no less than 20 cars that came out. Ultimately, at the end of this conversation, there is nothing more that any of us hope for, for Wilson Development, Development to be successful. And what they're doing here, we support it, but there is a, a number of issues that do bear being repeated. The improvements such as paving, raised manhole covers, in the winter, it's a slalom course around here. The, the unlit landscape dead ends, water issues, including at the top of a hill, in winter, that ice is over, that's a safety issue. The buses have really been talked about in, in detail, and how people pull in and out. Often, a lot of the big trucks that come in aren't paying attention to the cars that have to park in a very narrow way for the, the kids that are waiting for the school bus. The curbs are in really embarrassing disrepair.
It's 11 o'clock.
And I don't think there's anybody that hasn't heard from a, a visiting delivery person, guest, including at least one police officer who drove in here and asked questions about what was going on with our road and how is this the condition that it's in. Attorney Hoib, you, you mentioned that you've been on this for five to six weeks. We've got neighbors that have been patient for over 10 years, and I think that's, that's more than enough in wanting to see the neighborhood be successful, the builder to be successful. With this newest area, the blasting that's gone on, that was totally accepted. I, I believe everyone was very supportive of that. We weren't on this call when that letter came around, because we know there's homes you're planning on building. There's been promises, they've been unfulfilled, there's been delays, they only continue. Frankly, many of our communications has, have been met with an unresponsive tone, including texts and phone calls. We understand everybody's busy, but that's not necessarily reasonable. I think and hope that tonight's calls and everybody's patience now at 11 o'clock at night staying on show that at this point, that we'll ensure that if we're not, if we're not proving to, to hear from you, you're gonna hear from us. We've begun that process tonight and have gotten counsel from people that said, well, what are you doing talking directly to the builder? You have to talk to the town. So, I'm glad we've opened that conversation. You know, I hope the road is gonna be paved, but Mark, you mentioned earlier, your hope is that it's paved in the next couple of months. I'm not in the building industry, but I do know that hope is not a plant. We've been more than patient, and I'd be surprised if there's another development, at least in Unionville, that provides the property tax revenue that this complex provides. I appreciate the opportunity to be heard tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Barbara, Ms. Brenneman, if I may say something?
Yes.
I, I appreciate the frustration that everybody has here. I truly do. Without crying in my own milk here, this development, the delays that we've experienced have probably cost me somewhere in the neighborhood of six or seven million dollars. It's not in my financial interest to delay this development, okay? We've run into things that we could not have ever imagined. The economic crisis, the residential housing crisis, mistakes made in the state of Connecticut, mistakes that we've made. To everybody here, our office number is 677-8407, and my personal cell phone number is 614-1318. If you have an issue that's bothering you, that you think I can resolve for you, call me. I will address that issue. The bus issue, I hope the town staff has heard this and will take this to the town council and to the school board and try to help resolve this issue, because there's no reason a school bus can't go up and turn around in one of our cul-de-sacs. As far as the aesthetics of the community, we're gonna get, working on that immediately. To drainage issues and water running on people's property, where it needs to be addressed, it will be addressed. Any further delays on our part does nothing but cost me money. So, there's no advantage, no incentive for me to delay anything that we're doing. If I could start construction on phase four and pave this road tomorrow, I'll do it. I'll give you my word that I will work to get this completed, if possible. My intention by the end of this year, and everybody be happy. And I forget the gentleman who mentioned that you had a, a, a development party, a street party. You may not want to see me there, but if you ever do that again, call me, because I love to cook for people, and I'm cooked for all of you. I want you to enjoy where you live. I want you to be happy where you are, and if you're not, 614-1318. And if I don't recall, return your call, call me back until I return your call.
So, Mark, this is Dave again. I really appreciate that. We actually do have your cell phone, and we have made calls to that number and spoke with an assistant, but never spoke with you. So, I know that's changed now, and you'll take our calls. You also mentioned the road. We'd love to invite you to the, to the block party and hope that you can drive up a smooth road to get here, but I will tell you that we talked to, to Dawn G. at the bus company, and the reason that the school buses will not come up is because the road is not finished. So, that's, that, there is an action that has to be taken, and, and my understanding is your company's gonna have to do it. So, to stay, we can call them. It is not, by the town, if, if it's not paved. It's just the.
We'll contact the bus company and make sure that's truly an issue.
And that binder is beyond its shelf life. You're gonna have to tear up that binder and put new binder down. So, that's another expense that's added for not paving it earlier.
Well, like they say, you know, they say, know something Sherlock. I realize that by delaying or putting a final coat down is costing us. Believe me, I'd love to put the final coat down and get everything resolved. I would love to complete this development and start charging everybody their homeowners association fee to take care of common areas, but we've borne that expense ourself, and we will, we will make every attempt we can and try to make this development aesthetically look better for you. I will work with the town, I will contact the school board and Kathy Egan, the superintendent of schools, and try to resolve the bus issue for next year, if our children are going back to school next year. And believe me, folks, it costs me money every day, and we're not done. It's no advantage to me to delay this. I want to get this completed. I want to be proud of this, and I'm not proud of it right now, where we are. I'll tell you that. I'll be honest with you, I'm not proud, and I want to be proud when this is done.
Any more hands?
See, no more hands raised, Madam Chair.
All right, I'll go back to the commissioners. Do commissioners have any additional questions for the development group?
This is Inez, St. James. I, I'm just, you know, here, I, I knew we had the subdivision reapproval on, on the list. I was wondering what the reasons were to go from five years to 14 years and to, you know, finish this beautiful subdivision, and wow, there are a lot of issues. You know, residents in our town are not happy, you know, the concerns about the buses. I mean, I've driven on this road many times, I don't live far away, you cannot drive fast on that road. So, getting a bus on the current road, I don't think it's great unless it goes very, very slow. These are luxury homes we're talking about. I don't know. I mean, I, I would hate to not approve it, because all the work has stopped, and clearly there's a lot that needs to be done to finish it. I still think that, based on what I heard, we need a completion schedule.
That's not what we're being asked to do, though, Inez.
There is, I, I don't know. I just, I'm just shocked about all of the concerns people have. Wow.
I, I did send you an email when I arrived back at work after dinner tonight, and there was, although it was not a pure commitment, there was something of a completion schedule for the roadway at the end of that, that letter.
I did not look at it, Mark, or did not see it, excuse me. Okay.
Well, Mark Wilson talked about trying to get it accomplished by the end of this year. Is that what you were talking about?
Yeah. I, I, I wouldn't want to read the whole letter, but if you'd like, I'll read the last paragraph. The, the letter talks, the letter's dated May 11th, 2020. Letter is from Mark Wilson, manager WD2 LLC, dated May 11th, 2020, to the Town of Farmington Planning and Zoning Commission. The letter talks about the construction delays and the financial delays that have already been mentioned and put on the record, but it also, in its last paragraph, discusses a development schedule, and it reads as follows. Given our current relationship with several lenders, as well as the commitment for several lots in phase four by customers, and the potential sale of multiple lots to an additional buyer, WD2 anticipates that construction, that construction to complete phase four should begin again in the summer of 2020, and it is my anticipation that completion of the final paving of phases two through four should occur by year end 2020. I hope that the summary provides information which addresses the issue which may surround the extension of WD2's development approval of Bridge Hampton development by the commission. I stand ready to address any questions which the commission or town staff may have, as well as addressing any questions which may be raised by the community. And so, again, there is something.
So, you have it, okay. So, you have a schedule, so I think that's what we heard from everyone.
That was the last email you received from me today.
Okay. So, that's great, right? Or can we approve it with, with that condition?
No.
You can, well, I mean, you can put the condition down, but it's legally unenforceable.
Wow. Wow.
But I mean, you can still, you can put the condition down, and it's gonna put pressure on the developer, and we can talk to the developer and, and try to use it as leverage. You know, we're talking in an open forum here, there's not much that, much else that I could say. I don't want to tell you something that's not true.
No, I understand. I, yeah, I, no, I get it. You know, five to 14, and then who knows when it will end? I don't know. The paving of the, of the main road seems to be a huge deal. There is ton of things going on in the subdivision, and never mind when it rains. There is a ton of things going on in the subdivision, and never mind when it rains, and I've seen it personally. But I think for a luxury community, there has to be an end for these guys, but, okay. And safety, right? There were definitely many safety items that were brought up.
This is, this is Matt Pogson. I was just curious, do we need to make a motion to approve this before we have discussion as, you know, as the commission? Or does it matter if we have the discussion now? Because in the past, we've made the approval and then had the discussion. I'm just checking on the formality of that.
Say that again. We, we would be voting on what was appeared before us tonight.
Do, no, I'm sorry. Let me clarify that. Do we need to make a motion first and then have discussion? Or should we continue having discussion now and then make a motion after that?
Traditionally, discussion should go after the motion and the second.
I think you want to close the hearing before you cast it.
Yeah, but we can't get to that yet until I ask Attorney Hoep if he has anything he'd like to add before I close the hearing.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Brenneman. It's awfully late, and I don't want to take a lot of time summarizing. I do think you've had an opportunity to speak to the owner directly. He's spoken candidly and honestly and forthrightly. We know that there are concerns there, but you had an opportunity to speak to him, and I would just ask for the approval this evening. We want to move forward. Any further delay just holds everybody back. So I think we want to get going, and I think the neighbors want us to get going.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you, Chris. With that, I will close this public hearing. And now we need to have a motion and a second to start conversation on this application.
This is Matthew Pogson. I move to approve the application as presented with no additional conditions at this time.
May I have a second, please?
Mike Krueger, a second.
Discussion.
This is Matthew.
Everybody understand, we need to approve this so that it can go forward. If we don't approve it, nothing's gonna happen. And that's kind of what the attorney told us.
This is, this is Matthew Pogson. I have a question regarding the approval. I believe this went through Inland Wetlands again. Is that correct, Mr. DeVoe?
Yes, it is.
There were additional conditions that were requested by that commission. Is that true?
Yes, it is. However, I don't have those in the file. I just checked. The, the conditions were related to wetland issues and not infrastructure, not, not anything that has to do with, I believe, anything that was discussed this evening. My jurisdiction doesn't go, go to infrastructure.
My, my question is, how enforceable are the regular, are the conditions that the Wetlands Commission put on top of this? Because, go ahead.
Ms. Brenneman?
Yes.
This is Mark Wilson speaking. We're aware of the conditions that the Wetland Commission has recommended, and we're willing to accept those conditions.
Does that satisfy you, Matt?
My, my question, I guess, was trying to get to the point of if we were to, I suppose I was trying to get to the point of whether or not if we added a condition to this, although it would be very hard to enforce and technically possibly impossible to enforce if those conditions would be considered. It sounds as if the applicant is willing to consider additional conditions under the circumstances. At least he has shown that through the Inland Wetlands Commission. So.
Who's speaking, please?
I'm sorry, that, it's Chris Hoep. We consented to those conditions.
Correct.
At the Inland Wetlands meeting?
Yes, we consented to them.
Okay, so they're automatically part of this.
The, the major concern, so my point of asking these questions was that the major concerns from all of the people that live in this community seem to revolve around this road. If we were, are we able to, can we condition that this road be, have at least a final coating put on top of it in order to continue on with the work that they are doing? I know that obviously we are, you know, asking for that more than anything. We really don't have the authority to do that, but can we ask?
No, we don't.
I understand that, but the.
You can ask for it, Matt. Again, whether it's enforceable or not is a question for statutory law. Wetlands Commission doesn't have hard fixed regulations like the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding the regulation of individual activities. It does allow for a lot more leeway in terms, the statutes do allow for the Wetlands Commission to levy a lot more discretion in terms of what time of year things can happen and how they can happen. But the permit timeframes are essentially set, they can be toyed with a little bit with regards to the planning and zoning statutes, the planning statutes, the timeframes are what the timeframes are. So if you do cast a vote that includes conditions to pave a road, which is, the applicant has expressed, will probably be destroyed because they're gonna be working on the upper part of it.
You're stuck.
But if you, if you do, if you do that, the applicant, you know, can choose to ignore it and continue doing what they're doing, and the town has, you know, limited ability to enforce. However, it may, may, we may be able to use it as some form of bargaining wedge, if you will. Yeah. I mean, again, it's not unusual, whether it's a legal condition or not, or whether it's an enforceable condition or not, I think are irrelevant until it comes time to enforce the regulation. At least it lets you know, lets, lets the applicant know that you are concerned and that you want them to honor their commitment, their, the schedule that they gave you, which would be the end of the year 2020.
The concern that I have is that the road will get completed when these are finished, but that still is a very undefined number, although we hope that it's the end of this year. The people who have come here to speak this evening have spent the time waiting to speak about the condition of this road specifically, for the most part, and at least as a, I don't know, trying to do the right thing, I suppose, would be to try to help put a little leverage on this in order to see that the neighborhood is feeling completed. That's my only thought, and I suppose I leave that open for the commission. I know that it has no legal ramifications. It would be on the shoulders of the developer to feel obligated to do such, but it does seem as if we should at least ask for it. Besides that, I don't know. So I'll leave that open for discussion. That's all I have to say.
Patrick Carrier, he did, he did say, though, that it would be at the same time as the first course, not constructing the whole neighborhood. So the first course, I believe it's pretty, it's pretty far along over there. If, if they do get going, they, it should only, it should only take two, three months to be at the point of the first court, the first course, the binder course. And it's at that time that he would bring the rest of the neighborhood up to, up to par, is what I understood. Am I correct?
Exactly. Yes.
So maybe some kind of condition like that, that is, I guess, not enforceable, like you say, but it's realistic? You know, because I think the object is to get.
What's that? Yeah. Well, I was gonna say is. It can be happened in a recording, too. Yeah. And it conveys a, you know, a message to the applicant in terms of what the commission is anticipating. So I, I think that's fair.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I think the object here is to, is to get it moving, because like you said, if, if, you know, if we stall it in any way, I mean.
Nothing will get done.
Right.
That's not good for anybody.
Ms. Brenneman, this is Mark Wilson. Am I allowed to speak?
No.
Okay. Oh, shut up.
It's called hush time, Mark.
We're gonna run out of time. I don't know how long our time is gonna have.
We have, okay, at this point, we have a motion.
I made the motion. This is Matthew Pogson. I made the motion. Can I amend that motion?
Is, well, you can, you can do it either way. You can rescind the motion and make a new one, but you have to ask for second or to accept that.
That's fine with me. I will rescind my motion. Do I need somebody to second that? Is that what you're suggesting?
No. Who seconded your initial?
Mike Krueger. I don't know what's up here.
Mike, do you accept his, the rescinding of his motion?
I do.
Okay. Then, then Matt, you can make another motion.
All right. I would like to make a motion that the application go forward as presented with the condition that the applicant, I might need assistance on this, Mark. In good faith, in good faith, try to complete the road with a finished surface by the end of 2020.
One caveat, Matt. Not the finished surface, the first coat, the binder course. So it's good faith, yeah, redo the binder course below and put a new binder course on top, and if he can, and he feels comfortable, then he can do the finish on the bottom. But I think at the very least, we want a new binder course on the bottom, a new binder course on top by the end of 2020.
Okay, so I would like to have a new binder course and then possibly, possibly a finished coat on top of that by the end of 2020.
I don't think you'll have a finish. Do you think you'll have a finish?
A possibly finished coat would only be on the unfinished, the lower portion.
Very good. I, I mean, in, in good faith, that the, he does the best to finish the road to his best of his abilities by the end of 2020.
So your motion would read something like this, Matt. So you want to prove as presented with the condition that the applicant, in good faith, have the binder course on the complete road, Bridge Hampton, and possibly finish coat on the lower portion by the end of 2020.
Yes. Something that would allow the buses to go up there to make it safe for the children.
We can't do anything about that.
But I think that that would do that. I think that that would do that.
All right, well, we'll see. So now we need a second to that motion, please.
So just to be clear, so you're saying, so what you're saying is you're, you're putting a time limit on the binder course.
Who was speaking?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Patrick Carrier. I'm just trying to understand the motion here. So what you're saying is you're putting a timeframe as in the end of 2020 for the binder course on the upper section that has no binder course, and then a finish course on the lower section.
Hoping for a finish course on the lower section, but a binder, a binder course all the way is what the motion was, with possibly a finish coat on the lower portion by the end of 2020. I don't, I don't know if it's reasonable to expect them to do a finish coat on the, on the lower section.
Okay, so I, I didn't realize, Patrick Carrier, I didn't realize that the bottom, I guess that's something between town staff and the developer as far as, you know, what has to be done with that lower section. Is that something that's been already discussed and agreed upon, that the lower section is coming out?
It's part of this motion. I, I believe that much of that binder course that's on there will have to be removed and then redone, whether it's milled in place, whether it's removed, you know? But it, it needs to be redone because it's just not gonna provide an adequate surface for a finished course. So the, the motion would read again as approved as presented with the condition that the applicant, in good faith, install, I'll, I'll change it to instead of have, to install binder course on the road, and by road we mean Bridge Hampton, and possibly a finish coat on the lower portion by the end of 2020. That finish course is gonna be based upon whether or not the town feels comfortable with the traffic, the rest of the construction traffic running over the finished course. We're not gonna accept it if it's not right at the end of the road, at the end of the project. If it's all, if it's all marred up, we're not gonna be able to accept the road. So, you know, we don't want good money thrown after bad, whether it's ours or whether it's developers, but we do believe that a new binder course, at the very least, needs to be put on the entire road as soon as possible. Again, enforceable? Eh, we don't know, but I think it puts pressure on the developer, and so I would agree that this is reasonable.
Okay, Patrick Carrier, again, yeah, I was just, that's between town staff. Obviously, town staff is not gonna allow, you know, is not gonna accept the road if it's not done to, you know, the standards. So that's between them. That has nothing to do with us. What we're, what we're looking for, what we're looking for is a finished product on the first section for the homeowners. So if we just say, you know, if we just go into, if we only talk about the, a new binder course, well, then they're still on binder. It's new, but they're still on binder. You know, are the buses gonna go up at that point? So whatever has to be done, I, I was under the assumption when speaking with Mr. Wilson that what he was saying was when they do the binder on the section that they're working on currently, then they would do whatever it takes to bring it to the second course on the entire rest of the, of the subdivision. So whatever that is with town staff, you know, whether it be get rid of the binder and put another coat or not, and put a coat, whatever it is, it's the finished course that we're after.
So you, okay, so, and finish, so Matt, do you want to revise your, boy, it's late, folks, I'm sorry, to, to possibly finish, to, to possibly put a finish coat on, to just, to put the finish coat on?
I, I, there is a, there is a bond that is held on this road, correct? There's a bond that's held on this to make sure that it is done correctly.
That is correct, yeah, that is correct. The town's very reluctant to call the bond because it usually ends up with a pretty, there's some cash in the bond, but there's some surety in the bond, and we end up technically arguing with an insurance company, and I've seen those arguments go on for years.
Yeah.
So we're, we're, you know, it's not like we can just pull the money and go get the job done.
Right.
And it's, and it's not something that we would want to do unless it was absolutely necessary. If it is absolutely necessary, we'll be, we'll be obligated to do it. Typically, it's necessary when the developer walks away.
Right.
That's not the case here. So.
I think, I think that, I think that Pat had the right idea, and I do believe that that was said during the statements today, that when the binder course was put on the last section, that the final course would be put on the rest. I do believe that was said, and I, I do believe that that is what I was hoping for in my motion, at least that in good faith.
So we're removing the word possibly and just saying that.
It would be.
In good faith, install the binder course on the complete road and finish coat on the lower portion by the end of 2020.
Yes, please.
Okay.
And we have to take into consideration that we're dealing with COVID. We don't know what's gonna happen because of COVID.
We're gonna try, we're gonna try to hold onto this as best we can.
Yes, but you also have to, everybody has to remember that if, if something were to happen in terms of weather or impact, you have a hurricane, we have a blizzard, it changes everything, but making the, the statement that this is what we would like to see happen is viable for us to do. So you want to ask?
I mean, I don't like the 2020 part. I feel like he's, it's in his best intention to get that, that upper section paved. Now, if COVID holds him from doing it, or whatever it may be, I, I feel like realistically, or the best way to put it is when he pays that other, that upper section, because that's what he wants to do, then the lower section be fixed. Now, if it's next year because of awful reasons, well, that, I mean, there's only so much he can do, you know? It's.
That's right. It's realistic about it.
Yeah.
And that's why. The commission has, the commission has given some expectations to the developer in terms of what they want to see.
Mike, I have to go back to Mike. Will you accept the revisions to this motion?
I do.
Because you seconded it.
Yeah, Mike Krueger will say second.
Okay. Any other conversation? I'm gonna call for a vote, please. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The vote carries with the conditions as placed. Thank you all for taking care of that. Now we go on to the planners' report, and I think the only thing you want to talk about on planning is outdoor dining, right?
Yes, we've covered. If I may, this is Mark Wilson. Thank you very, very much.
You're welcome.
And we do live within those conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So for the rest of the commission that is remaining, please don't leave. I've got something very important for you, and I know it's late. Try to get through this as quickly as I can. We've got an. We've got an ask and it's the same ask that other planners and staff have been asking of other commissions statewide. When May 20 rolls around, and this is particularly for our restaurants, and the governor rolls out phase one of the state reopening, if you will, restaurants are going to be allowed to offer outdoor seating. Some of our restaurants already have outdoor seating, some do not. For those that already have outdoor seating, they're going to be able to, following the state and Farmington Valley Health District guidelines, open up those outdoor venues. And, and there's nothing zoning can do to hold that back. We're not going to police it, that's more of a health issue. But for those that have outdoor dining that maybe can only seat a small amount, and let's face it, their parking lots are not full, and they want to use some lawn or a portion of their parking lot that they can safely cordon off, according to staff review, we'd like to be able to offer administrative approvals and turn these around in a matter of days instead of weeks so that these folks can get some income and start doing what they need to do.
Keep their businesses going.
Right. So these, these are, I had initially named it provisional, but we changed it to temporary certificates of outdoor dining. Simsbury's already done this. These are not really permits because we don't want to charge for them. We want to do this free of charge. So that's why we're calling them certificates, because the state would grab 60 bucks off of each permit and we just don't, we don't want to do that. So it's a, it's a TCOD, Temporary Certificate of Outdoor Dining. No permits are required. No building official or fire marshal permits are required, however. If they install tents, they may have to meet certain code. So there'll be an internal review in the land use department as well as the building department. There are no fees. If they already have outdoor dining, they can choose to expand it based upon a staff review of existing parking. You know, if you're in a plaza where the owner owns the parking and the owner doesn't sign off on your application, guess what? You can't do it. You just can't do it. But if the owner signs off on the application, you still need to be able to provide a safe means for your waitstaff to get back and forth to the dining area. It needs to be cordoned off with more than just rubber cones. There needs to be some sort of, you know, brick ballast or jersey barriers or even, even, even cars. You know, that's not ideal, but on a temporary basis, you know, we have to do what we can do. They're going to need to submit plans that show the spacing of the tables, proximity of the dining areas, the count of the chairs, and it's going to give us something to review in terms of the fact they're not open on the inside. So all their tables are outside. Now we can do a staff, a parking calculation. Even if they use a portion of their paving, we can take that into consideration. They're losing 17 spaces, but they have 40. Well, they can only seat, you know, 25 people in these 17 spaces. Well, the 40 spaces that remain, or however many spaces remain, are adequate based upon your zoning code. So we're going to, we're going to do that. Obviously, fire marshal, we will be looking at any tent construction, fire ratings. Building official will be looking at snow, wind load, I should, snow load is probably not germane right now, but you never know. Farmington Valley Health District will not be issuing permits, but they do have a published set of guidelines that will need to be followed. Little question and answer here. They're going to have to come in with a plan that's good enough for us to be able to make a determination. We've already received one. It's not good enough, it scribbles. So we're going to have to go back and say, no, go out there, you've got a, you've got a, you've got a scale plan, draw it out so we have something to adequately review. Are they required to cover dining areas? No, they're not. If they can, if they can find a tent to rent, they can. But again, they need to comply with building and fire codes and setting these tents up. Can they serve alcohol? If they have a valid permit from the state of Connecticut to serve alcohol on an existing patio, big difference than inside, with no modifications, they can. If they come to us for a modification for a temporary certificate of outdoor dining or a new patio, they've got to apply to the state liquor commission. For us, it's a simple, so simple sign off on their state form and the state has said that they will process these forms as quickly as possible. If they do not have a liquor license at all, by the time they go about getting a license, this thing will hopefully be over. So we're just going to say, no, you can't have outdoor alcohol if you don't have a liquor license at all. Outdoor bars are not permitted, okay? Your timing situation, so how long will a TCOD be valid? Now, it's a fluid situation, involves zoning, building, fire, and health approvals. When the executive, governor's executive order is lifted and you can resume indoor dining, the TCOD will be subject to review and may be suspended if it is found you cannot accommodate both indoor and outdoor dining based upon their unique requirements for parking and safety. Regardless of ongoing review, no TOCD will remain in effect past August 30, 2020, unless conflicting executive orders are issued by the governor. In that case, certificate extensions may be evaluated. So if the governor says, oh, well, guess what? We're going back to the beginning of phase one, you still can't go in, we may, we may allow these outdoor dining venues to stay open through September, whatever is reasonable in terms of the weather. We hope not to, believe me, but it'll be, it'll be, it'll have to be reevaluated in terms of when those executive orders click off. All TOCDs are subject to revocation, TCODs, excuse me, for failure to follow safety protocol and/or the creation of any nuisance. And that's the outdoor bar that I mentioned. We really don't want to start seeing parties. So they are subject to revocation and there's no formal, because these are very informal approvals. There'd be a very succinct and swift revocation if they fail to comply. And there's the contact list for everybody that, you know, anyone that they might have to contact. So essentially, we are looking for a blessing from the Town Plan and Zoning Commission to authorize staff, that would be myself, Shannon Bruce, Chris Furion, Mike Galino. Chief of Police will be notified, Health District will obviously be notified, to approve temporary outdoor dining after a firm and thorough review to make sure that safety concerns are met and that, that these things will be temporary, there will be expirations. That's my big ask for tonight. And it is a big ask. I've been asked to move this forward as quickly as I can by my management and I'm hoping that, that you'll, you'll give it strong consideration. We'd like to move on this as quickly as possible.
Mark, this is Matt Pogson. I appreciate everything you've done. I think this is fantastic. I think that it'll help hopefully keep a bunch of our businesses afloat. I don't know what we want for discussion, but I'm going to just move for an approval if that's okay with Madam Chair.
That's fine.
Okay.
I need a second.
I move to approve the Farmington Guide to Temporary Certificate for Outdoor Dining. And it says on 5/11, authorizing the staff to handle requests for temporary outdoor dining for restaurants until the governor has rescinded his.
Executive order.
Executive order, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you very much.
Need a second.
Mike Corbola, I second. I just do have one question on this. Mark, I think this is great. I think it's necessary.
I thank you, Mike, because you, you're the one that spurred me to do this. You asked the question about two weeks ago and I, I took it to heart.
Yeah, no, I really appreciate it and I think it's great. My only question is as far as the tents go. Obviously.
They have to find one first.
Yeah. Obviously, all the, you know, we'd have to go to the fire marshal's office and everything. But what about tents with sides? Because once you, if these places buy tents with, or rent tents with sides, you create in-building atmosphere as well. And does that contradict?
It's a good question and it's one that I thought of. I, I believe we're going to try to prohibit or strongly discourage walled tents. And, and I did try to have a conversation, I believe me, it has been so busy, with Jennifer from the Farmington Valley Health District. I may have an email waiting for me when I get upstairs. I called her and I emailed her. So we're going to take that a little further. It's not necessarily in here, but I'm looking for direction to try to avoid any kind of walled structures because it defeats the purpose.
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
Good point.
Thank you, Mark.
You need to take a vote, please? Does everybody understand what we're voting on?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
We need the minutes approved from the April 20 meeting, please.
I move to approve, this is Matthew Pogson and I move to approve the minutes from April 20.
You need a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Is that Marcy?
Yeah.
No, I, no, I did not abstain.
Oh.
Okay.
Sounded like you did.
No.
Six of them.
No, I have no sounds here at all.
All right. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
We are adjourned.
Okay.
Thank you.
Night.
Thank you so much.
Good job, folks.